Okay, now we're at seven. There you go. Five, four, three, two, one. There you go.
Okay, thanks. So, Council, good evening. We are reconvening this public hearing from February 11th and 16th. So I'll call this meeting to order. We're meeting under Ministerial Order M192, and we're all meeting remotely. Just please make sure your video is turned on when you are able. If my connection is lost, or if any of our connections are lost, we'll reset the meeting until the connection is restored. But to maintain quorum through the meeting, please let the clerk know if you leave, so we can make sure there are at least six people in the room. Members of the public can listen to the proceedings via the live stream and YouTube link, which will be tweeted out @VancityClerk. Presentations, amendments, and vote results will be projected to viewers when available. I also want to note the City of Vancouver's longstanding commitment to equity, diversity, and inclusion include the utmost respect for all genders. I remind Council that when addressing speakers and staff, we avoid using gendered honorifics, and will instead refer to the person by the first and last name, or role, or title. So, for example, clerks. Lastly, following the updated guidelines issued on February 5th, in-person participation for local government meetings is not permitted under the provincial health order, and speakers will be commenting by phone, and a moderator will assist in patching the speakers through when the term comes up. Clerks, give me the roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor Stewart. You were in the chair. Deputy Mayor Carr?
Here.
And Counselor Dejanova?
Present.
Counselor Frye?
Present.
Counselor Swanson?
Here.
Counselor Hardwick?
Present.
Counselor Weave?
Present.
Counselor Boyle?
Present.
Counselor Dominado?
Present.
Counselor Bly?
Present.
Counselor Kirby Young?
Present.
The public hearing has quorum, Mayor Stewart.
Great, thanks so much. Of course, we acknowledge we're in the traditional and seated territories of the Musqueens, Queensland, and Sableteas people, and thank them for their generosity to all who live on the land. And we want to thank the staff for everything they're doing to make this city great, and especially in this time of COVID. So there's a couple of things to remind folks as we go through this. Speakers have five minutes to make their comments. It should limit their comments to the merits of the report being considered. Speakers should also state whether they are in support or opposed to the recommendations, and if they are resident of Vancouver. Speakers may only speak once, and should follow along on Twitter @VancityClerk for updates, so they don't miss their turn to speak. Any comments on agenda items can be submitted in writing to our online web form at vancouver.ca/public-hearing-comments, and the link will be tweeted out. Finally, speakers who have pre-registered with presentations are reminded that the public live feed has a slight delay. To navigate through the slides of your presentation, please say next, and I'll help with that if we get stuck. Just a reminder that our role, the council's role at this public hearing, is to be a quasi judicial body, which means that council is only to consider the merits of the rezoning application or heritage designation. Sometimes speakers or council members stray from this, and I'll remind folks just to move them back on to the item at hand. Council members may ask clarifying questions from speakers, including the applicant or technical advice from staff, which is safe debate or statements for after the close of speakers. After hearing from speakers, we can approve the principle and application, sorry, improve in principle the application, refuse the application, or defer the application for further consideration. So now we're going to continue with our CD1 rezoning hearing on 3084 West Fourth Avenue and 210 Belliclava Street. Just a reminder, we've dealt with items one and two on this agenda in this reconvene meeting. Last week began item three. This is the West Fourth and Belliclava. With opening comments from staff and the applicant team, we've asked questions. We began hearing from the public, and we'll continue that tonight. So if there are any speakers of this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 1061445. Hashtag get on the list before the close of the speakers' list. The phone number will be tweeted out and available on livestream. We have speakers on the line provide comments on this item. Due to technical difficulties last time, we'll return to and begin with speaker number six, followed by speaker 12, 13, and then 15, 16, and so on. And I'll call out numbers as we go, just to keep everybody on track. And we're ready to go. So we're going to move straight to speakers. We have speaker number six, and if I can just call up my list here. That is Claire Anne Lidstone.
Claire Anne Lidstone here.
Great. I can, and you have up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Okay, I'm representing two others.
Okay, and we did.
As well as myself.
And we didn't hear from you.
Oh, sorry.
You did speak last time?
No, I haven't spoken, but there are two others I'm speaking for, as well as myself.
Okay, and do you have them there with you?
Yeah, I do, indeed.
Okay.
Oh, actually, I have. Yeah. Can I pass the phone to them?
That would be excellences. Thank you.
Jessie Harlett?
Thank you.
Oh, Gimbarski?
Okay.
And Ian Newman?
Great.
All residents of this household.
Great, thanks.
Okay, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Okay, go ahead.
I have less than, okay, I have less than, I live less than a half a block from the proposed six-story building on Fifth Avenue. I have lived here for 43 years, and I am opposed to the rezoning to six stories. What amazes me to this day is that Kitsellano is so unique. I say this as I have had the good fortune to visit at least 80 cities in 70 countries. Kits is a community so very close to downtown, and has a distinctive small-town feel, and I know that is largely due to the lack of taller buildings and looming high rises. There is a place for urban density in cities, but not in Kits, one of the last historic neighborhoods in this great city. Taller buildings, bigger buildings have a negative impact on both the social connections and social capital within neighborhoods. Many of our guests and visitors from all over the world, from all over this country, from all over the province, and even across the city, feel extremely fortunate that they have come to this area of the city and really love it here. They appreciate the lack of looming buildings, the small-town feel, as well as the character. I am not alone. I have lived in and been actively involved in Kitsellano for over 45 years. Building community is a passion, and I have literally talked to hundreds of people over the years, and lately. And in my role of block watch captain, as a participant in community facilities on a daily basis, and walk my dog through Kitsellano streets and back alleys, people voice their concerns. And so approximately 25 years ago, I joined others in having purposeful conversations about what residents of Kitsellano did and did not want in their community. Residents were worried then, and still are, that we are beginning to look like downtown. Our buildings were getting higher, our green space was diminishing, trees were being cut down, and our heritage buildings and houses were disappearing, and expensive, characterless housing was replacing these. You heard from Cameron Zuko earlier. He is my neighbor, and I want to thank him for all the tireless work and for the multitude of hours spent. I myself know, as many, many nights I knocked on doors, many, many nights we had meetings, many, many nights we went to City Hall, turned down. So again, I knocked on doors, went to meetings, and approached City Hall again, and again, and again. Our concerns, height of buildings, we wanted only three stories. We wanted the homes across the street from me on Fifth to be deemed heritage homes, so they could not be destroyed, any new homes and renovations to be built in the character of the neighborhood with neighborhood input. No trees to be cut, if owners just felt like it. We were successful. It took six long years, six years. The mayor and councillors listened. We negotiated a few details, but overall, we were pretty happy. It took us six long years. We don't have six years. We only have tonight. This proposed six-story building is two stories higher than any other building in the neighborhood. It is two, sometimes two and a half stories higher than any other building along Fourth Avenue. I know, I have walked and biked from Alamo to Burrard a multitude of times. There is not one building higher than four stories. So two stories higher, two stories too high. One is only to speak to a six-foot-six person to experience the power of height. Every day, I walk four to six times past this property. Today, and all yesterdays, I appreciated this affordable housing, the lawn, the 45-plus-year-old rose bush, the fabulous trees, the annuals, the young people sunning themselves on the lawn or throwing around a ball. Tonight, I have only a few minutes, not six years. A few minutes to plead for the community we love, a few minutes to be the voice of many more than you will hear tonight. The voice of people, not just profit. Our community is already changing. There is less truly affordable housing, resulting in less and less young people, less families, and far less diversity of socio-economic backgrounds. Less diverse and increasingly a monoculture of the wealthy appropriating the life of our community until there is none left, until Kitsellano looks like every other upscale neighborhood in North America. As a past professional, I would not have been able to afford this proposed rent, and not even a remote chance of being able to save and afford any of my travel, not even as a shoestring backpacker. This taller building will inflate the price of our properties. History shows adjacent land gets inflated. Not good. Again, higher taxes. A bigger building will also create traffic congestion, more traffic on our street, more parking problems in our already limited street parking. No, we don't want additional fees to our extremely high taxes to limit parking. If anything I have to say sounds elitist, I can assure you it is not. There is a misconception that if you live in Kits, you are wealthy. Many of us are not. The average income reported in the presentation is wonky, mostly due to some multimillionaires that live here. I happen to be very lucky, bought my house so many years ago that it was $80,000. I'm not lucky now. My house would sell for over $2 million, but I am not happy about this at all, because my taxes are almost 10% what I paid for it. I am a pensioner. I don't want to leave my home of 43 years, and I would have to without my renters. True to my values, I have kept my rents extremely low. Affordable is more important to me than making money. It has been said that this is already a done deal, and we are allowed to spout off. We are hoping that this is not true, and you are listening carefully to us. Everything we fought for for six long years will be destroyed by building this six-story building, and the rezoning application is approved. The real estate developers will be happy, but the majority of residents of Kits will not. And it will open the floodgate for developers, and we will see many more higher buildings. If you approve this rezoning.
Thanks for just coming out upon eight minutes.
Okay, the uniqueness of our neighborhood, one sentence. The uniqueness of our neighborhood in Kitsellano is threatened and will be lost forever. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak.
Thank you. You have some questions? Counselor Hardwick, up to five minutes.
Thank you. Thank you, Claire Anne, for your very considered and sincere words. I can tell you love the neighborhood. The neighborhood Kitsellano has changed tremendously over the many decades. I can hear somebody chewing in the background there. Thanks. And you've lived there for a great many years, but you acknowledged in your commentary that we need to make room, that we need to have more space for younger people and people of mixed incomes. So I'm interested to hear from you what your thoughts are on how we make room that is going to be acceptable and consistent with the emerging character of Kitsellano. Because I presume you're not saying no development. You're saying no to six stories and something that is inconsistent. So could you describe to me what you would see as acceptable?
Well, I would see any four-story building that was in the character of the neighborhood. I mean, from my front porch, I can see a crane on Broadway, but Broadway is a commercial area, so I can understand why some of those buildings were a little higher. But the rest of Kitsellano, I mean, we, many people are, have rental places in their basement, and they're making houses in their backyard, and that is continuing. I mean, there's continual development all the time. I can see that all around the neighborhood. So I'm just hoping that this development that is happening is more affordable.
Okay, well, there's a couple of different things there. There's the affordability, and there's the number of units, and there's the height and density. So I'm trying to unpack it a little bit. Because it's pretty clear that this property is going to get developed. The question is, what about height and density, what form it will take? And I don't want to put words in your mouth.
Yeah, well, Cameron had a, he's been working on a suggestion, and working with the developers in that respect.
Okay, I'll leave it there. So you're not adverse to development, and it's really about making sure it's consistent, neighborliness within the community?
And the height of the buildings, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I think you may be.
I'm on mute. Yeah, I'm saying you're on mute. You're on mute. Counselor Kirby Young, up to five.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Ms. Lidstone, for speaking. I also used, I used to live in Kitsellano. I don't now. And a little west of Arbutus, and I loved it. I lived in a four-story at the time. I just wanted to ask you kind of a couple of follow-up questions, and that was, you spoke about sort of the importance of affordability in terms of choices, and the cost of housing obviously is very different now. Though when you purchased yours, I think you said you purchased yours for about $80,000, I think you said? And they say that now to get sort of an average home in Vancouver could be a million dollars on average. What, based on the current economics, and this is my question, if this wasn't a six-story rental building, which is often stated as more expensive to build, the other alternative under the existing zoning is to build a four-story strata, meaning that somebody would have to purchase a condo, which are obviously much more expensive today versus renting. So do you have any comments on that in terms of those options and choices? I'm just thinking in terms of your comment that we need to make room for affordable housing. I'm interested in your thoughts on that.
I'm not exactly sure what the question, what your question is.
Well, I'm saying there's two, if the developer were to proceed without going for this rezoning that he's seeking, they're seeking tonight, and they were not successful, they could build a four-story strata, meaning purchase condos, right, for sale, as opposed to rental housing? So it wouldn't be more affordable. It would be people that would have to purchase homes from the price of condos, and I'm wondering what your thoughts are on that.
Well, I think as Cameron pointed out, that it wouldn't have, that he had a plan for something to be built that would be not six stories and more in the character of the neighborhood. And I'm not sure about the affordability. But, I mean, I think everywhere in Kits, in the whole city, we need more affordable housing. So it doesn't necessarily have to be here, but I would love to be, see that happening. Or see people, people, like, for instance, I have a few renters, and I keep it as low as possible for them.
Okay, so you would, would you, so just to be clear, you would prefer to have a four-story condo building versus a six-story rental building in your neighborhood? Can I ask you the question that way? I just want, I'm just trying to understand.
Well, I don't know if it needs to be a condo, per se. I don't know why there couldn't be a four-story building that had affordable renting in it. That had more space, that wasn't, that wasn't so compact.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Go ahead, finish your thought.
Well, I'm thinking that what is, what would be built there wouldn't have to be as compact, have so many people crowded into a smaller space, and that it'd be more affordable.
Okay, I'll leave it there. Thank you for speaking.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Weave, up to five minutes.
Yeah, thanks for coming to speak today. You talked that you've spoken to a few hundred people in the neighborhood, and that this building could lose the unique character forever. Can you talk about what elements of the character you think the building will make us lose in the neighborhood?
Sorry, that will make us.
You talked about this building, if approved, would make it, would make it, you would lose the unique character forever of Kitsellano. I'm just wondering what elements of the character would be lost with this building?
Well, Cameron has talked to the developers, and he has a plan to build something that is more in character with the, with the neighborhood.
Okay.
He already spoke, yes.
Yeah, but I mean, we're looking at this building here today.
Yes, and I'm opposed to the height.
You're opposed to the height.
And the resulting density, and the resulting density of that height. And also, I mean, yeah, and the green, loss of the green space, and, you know, the parking, and because of the people, and, you know, all the points that I mentioned.
Okay, but obviously, you are happy that they are keeping the trees in the front of the property, and they're planting more trees than are currently on the property, so that's something you're probably supportive of? Is that correct?
Yes, that, the truth would be saying, yes, it's good, yes. I would love to see the forty. Go ahead.
Yeah, you talked about more affordability, just not here, and it's something we hear a lot. This is the second building we've had in Kitsellano of the similar height, and there's been a lot of conversation that we need affordable housing in Kits, just not in this location. And so I'm guessing, what locations do you think it's appropriate to put more housing in Kitsellano? Recognizing, just like the last project, I went to Kitsi, I grew up in Kitsellano, been there for most of my life, and our generation is no longer in Kits. No one in my grad class still lives in Kits. And so I'm just wondering, we've lost a generation, and so how do we bring back a generation to Kitsellano, recognizing there's not the affordable housing choices for us?
I don't know. That's a good question.
Yeah, really appreciate you bringing your expertise today and talking to so many people in the time. Thanks for coming.
Thank you. That's it. That's it for questions. Thank you very much. Thanks for calling in this evening, participating.
Okay, thank you.
Just say to Council, we're at 7:24. That was speaker number six, and now we're moving on, I believe, to speaker number 12. We are slated to, Council, we're slated to go to 10 o'clock tonight. And perhaps clerks can remind us at some point when our next meeting would be, and I'm just looking at, sorry, just looking at the list here. Right, we have speaker number 12, Nathan Hawkins.
Hello, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, Council. My name is Nathan Hawkins. I am 27 years old. I rent in Vancouver. And judging from the sale price of $2 million that the previous speaker was talking about, if I was to put my whole annual salary towards buying a house in Kits right now, it would take me 40 years. And of course, I can't put my whole annual salary into buying a house. You know, I have other expenses that I need to afford. And I'm just trying to highlight how deeply, deeply unaffordable Kitsellano is right now. This proposal is saying we'll take eight homes, and we'll turn it into 35 homes. And I'm really strongly in support of that. It's the only way that somebody from my generation, you know, who's under 50, can ever reasonably afford living in Kitsellano now. There was a lot of criticism talking about, you know, this building shouldn't be over four stories. It doesn't align with the rest of the neighborhood, and I agree, it doesn't align with the rest of the neighborhood. The rest of the neighborhood should be much more dense than it is. You have two major commercial areas on Fourth and on Broadway, and there just aren't enough people who live there to support those businesses. And this is the ideal part of Vancouver that we should be densifying, because, you know, there's options if you walk three blocks north, if you walk three blocks south, to have every amenity you could possibly need within 15 minutes. You know, there's no need, or a reduced need for people to own cars and to emit carbon that way. There's just so many opportunities for us to be living in a greener, more sustainable city. There were people at the last hearing talking about how they couldn't get their basement suites approved by the city. And I think basement suites should be allowed, too. I don't think we should be pitting residents against each other, you know, in trying to improve their own properties. We should let anyone be building and densifying and providing more homes where they want to. If you have your art and craft houses, you know, those are great. Those are beautiful. Nobody's asking you to change your house or requiring you to change your house. We're just saying, other people who own land in this area, if they want to build something new, if they want to create purpose-built rental, they can do that, and they should. And there's all this talk about, you know, the zoning, the character of the neighborhood. And I want to say, you know, zoning is not something that was created to be inclusive. It was intended to be exclusive. It was intended to keep working-class families out of the wealthy neighborhoods. And you look at the character of Kitsellano today. It is overwhelmingly white. It is overwhelmingly people who have a high net worth. It is overwhelmingly people who are above 60 and have owned property in this neighborhood for over 20 years. We need to provide an opportunity for the youth to live in this neighborhood. Otherwise, it's just a huge dead zone in Vancouver, and it's so close to the heart of the city. It just doesn't make any sense. To the people who are saying that, you know, we only want three or four stories, what you're saying in effect is 20 people can live here, but 35 can't. 35 people have to live somewhere else, and I'm just not okay with that on principle. I think we should be welcoming more people into every neighborhood in the city. And frankly, as a renter, I'm really tired of being held hostage by landlords and landowners in this area who are trying to push back and say, oh, go build it somewhere else. Because usually, go build it somewhere else means go build it in the east side, where, you know, it's lower-income housing, and, you know, those people can live over there, but you people can't live here. My final summary is, you know, if we want to have a more environmental city and be lower-carbon emitting, we should build more housing and more walkable cities densely, so that people can walk everywhere. They don't need to drive everywhere. If we want more equity and fairness, we need to build more housing so that lower-income people, minorities, who are excluded from these areas can come and live there, and they don't have to commute from faraway areas like Abbotsford and Surrey, which is the only place where they can afford to buy a home. If we want to, you know, help the local economy recover from COVID, we need to build more housing in dense neighborhoods, right? If you're not spending $1,000 a year on your car, you're going to spend more locally in businesses.
Thanks for the opportunity to speak. Thank you for calling in this evening. I don't see any questions for you, so we'll move on to the next speaker. Let's see, we've got speaker number 13, Sarah D. Hanson.
Hi, Mayor, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Please go up ahead, up to five minutes.
Oh, thank you, Mayor, Mayor and the Counselors. I'm, uh, wanting to acknowledge firstly that I, I think I have eight minutes to speak, so I'm speaking on behalf of Marty and John Mason, and they, because of COVID, are in their house next door.
Okay, uh, can I just pause, uh, just for a second, I just want to check with the clerks, um, if they've checked, uh, one, one second, I'll be right with you, uh, Speaker. Okay, Speaker, uh, you're correct, I just checked with the clerks and you have, uh, prearranged, uh, with the other two speakers you're representing, so please go ahead, up to eight minutes.
Good, thank you. Um, my name is Sarah Hanson, and I, unlike the previous speaker, live a block from this house. I am a resident of Vancouver, I've lived here for sixteen years. Um, ten of those years I was as a renter, and the last six as a, um, triplex in the neighborhood. Um, I also am directly behind on West Fifth, so I walk by this proposed project every day, most often three, four times a day, and I can see it from the front, uh, of my yard. Um, I'm speaking on my own behalf, and my views don't represent, uh, my law firm, I am a lawyer. Um, myself and, uh, my two, uh, neighbors are all, three of us opposed to this proposed project. Um, I just want to acknowledge I'm on the unceded and traditional territory of the Musqueam, Squamish and Tsleil-Waututh Nations. So I want to go on record as supporting mixed communities and supporting moderate-income housing projects. This isn't a case of MIMBY, not in my backyard, this is a case of, um, density is required, but this project isn't eligible. And to, um, speak as, uh, to steal a phrase, if you will, from Mayor Stewart, this entire tone of the discussion should change here. Um, this is not an eligible project under the Moderate Income Rental Housing Pilot Program, and I'll refer you to my letters of February ninth and tenth. Um, that is, is true on the language of the pilot program, regardless of the intention of Counsel at the time, which frankly, isn't relevant, and if it's not an eligible project, then it's not eligible to be put to a vote. Um, secondly, it doesn't meet the objects and purposes of the pilot project as it was established. What you're doing here is replacing six moderate-income rental units with an average rental rate of one thousand six hundred and forty-four a month in rent, with, um, eight rental units at a higher rent. And so, I don't see how that makes any sense. There was a question posed to the owner developer of how do existing rents compare to the proposed rents? And we've done some work just in looking at the, um, materials that are provided on the, by the architect and the plans, and indeed, what you see is that the rent under the moderate-income housing program, uh, if you look at it as a square footage basis, will increase fifty percent over the existing rental units. So we're not talking about modern, increasing moderate, uh, income rental units here. We're talking about replacing six existing moderate-income units with eight at a more expensive rent. And so the language of your pilot program specifically says, "Consider redevelopment of a limited number of highly underutilized sites with a low number of existing tenants, buildings with a maximum of three existing rental units." What it should have say, say, to be eligible, would, would be, to be an eligible site, each building on the site must not exceed three existing rental units. So, um, I think you take my point on that. I echo Joyce Murray's, um, comments in her letter, that I think you also have a consultation problem here. You have some unscientific back-of-the-nap-in calculations on what the secured rental buildings are in the neighborhood. Um, you have no design rationale, um, provided in the material. And frankly, in my view, you haven't really looked at the supply side of the equation in this particular community. And as I said, I, I, we all, uh, density is really in emotive terms, meaning that how each of us feel about density is informed by our own experiences and our own baggage and how we come to understand that we're density and approach to considerations about density. And, you know, my, my professional life is as an environmental, um, brownfield developer. And so when I look at our neighborhood, and I provided a, um, a PDF there, that's just a Google map of our neighborhood, what I see is that there's an important link between density policy and government policy targets, particularly with respective brownfield sites and mixed communities. And so a brownfield site, for those that don't know, it is, um, where there's potentially either presence of potential presence of contamination. And so you heard a couple of the speakers just before I got on saying, well, you know, we need to be more dense, we need to be more environmental, we need to be sustainable, and I don't disagree with that. Um, but in my experience, you've got at least eight sites here that are undeveloped, potentially brownfield sites, and you have no brownfield policy. And so if you look at the whole corner of McDonald and West Fourth, you see the old Chevron station sitting there idle, you see another project on the northwest side that's empty. We had the Pango Cafe fire, that's obviously a contaminated site that's sat, sat empty. Two lots there, and one more block down, it's been an empty lot for the six years I've been here, again, another double lot. So when you're looking at the supply side of the chain, you need to look at what you're doing as a matter of policy when it comes to brownfield developments, not an experience that's unique to Vancouver. I see similar sites all over Saskatchewan, where I'm from, in rural communities where the heart of the city, which for us is at Fourth and McDonald, has to be moved because these sites haven't been remediated. Sometimes they haven't been aban-, they haven't been, they've just been abandoned or underdeveloped. So you have the tools to put on your economist hat and see the link between density policy and your policy targets, which respect to brownfield sites. And you need to see the link here between our lack of density, density in Kitsellano and your policy on brownfield sites. I read an article from the internet on February fifth, twenty-twenty-one, that Vancouver just received six hundred thousand dollars in their federal grant funding to clean up brownfield sites. And you can imagine how sad I was when I saw that that city of Vancouver is actually the city of Vancouver, Washington. Uh, time is, uh, much less now to clean up and remediate sites than it used to be. The cost has changed, the technology has changed, you should be looking at that in your pilot. You need to support and require redevelopment in locations where there is already existing infrastructure and focus on the heart of the community at Fourth and McDonald. And if you could do that, you wouldn't have to build at off-center locations at six stories, which in my view is really just a band-aid approach to achieving the density you're looking for, and frankly, what Vancouverites expect. So I oppose the six stories for the reasons set out in my letter. I do, um, just to answer a question that was raised, the Bellaclava option provides eighty-seven percent of the rentable square footage of the Millers' option. Um, so that is an option I think that should be considered. I oppose six stories for the reasons set out, but you need to look at this neighborhood, and demand has increased to the point where you must require that unproductive brownfield sites be redeveloped and integrated into healthy communities, not turn a blind eye, look a couple of blocks off the center to Bellaclava, and build higher to mask the underlying problem. That's all I have to say, Mayor, Mayor and Counselor.
Great, thanks so much. You have questions, Counselor Hardwick, up to five minutes.
Thank you. What was your background again?
I'm a lawyer.
Okay, that makes sense.
And, and, and a residence block away. I, it's funny, I've never spoken at a meeting like this before, but it, just looking at all of our idle, undeveloped sites, it just, uh, struck a chord with me.
Well, um, yeah, you're, you're right. I hadn't thought about the brownfield sites. Um, well, we're, we're certainly aware that they're there and, and living off their half-lives. Um, but let's go back to this particular, um, s- site again. Um, you spoke about why, uh, this proposal didn't meet the MERP guidelines, policy guidelines. And I think you were talking, uh, about the site-specific number of underutilized s- sites. Could you just run through that again? You, you went over it quite quickly.
No problem. So there's, my letter dated February ninth, the letter of February ninth details this out for you. And at the bottom of the page, on page two, it's the Pilot Program General Guidelines for Additional Height and Density. And it specifically provides that for additional height and density in RM zones, you need to consider redevelopment of a limited number of highly underutilized sites, with, not buildings, with a low number of existing tenants, buildings with a maximum of three existing rental units. So this, here we have buildings, just plural, on an underutilized site, but we have six existing rental units. So you're not, this isn't an eligible project. So it does not say, which it should do, to make this project eligible, it should read, "To be an eligible site, each building on the site must not exceed three existing rental units." So that's where I say you have a consultation problem, is if you're going to go back now and to read in or change the language of that pilot program, you have to go back to consultation phase for that program.
But we're being told that, you know, I-
It doesn't make sense. It doesn't make sense, it doesn't fit with-
But, you know, we've heard several people say, sorry to interrupt you, but we've heard several people point out the fact that it doesn't meet the, the, uh, criteria laid out for RM zones in, uh, it doesn't meet the policy guidelines. I think it's clearly not compliant, but we're being told that doesn't matter, that, um, that the, the net increase in the number of units rental justifies the fact that it doesn't comply with the policy.
Yeah, and you're not being told that, I assume by, and I'm not offering a legal opinion, but you would need to have a legal opinion to rely on that interpretation. If you were then to be challenged, for example, um, on that reading, you would, I expect, want to be able to say you reasonably relied on a legal opinion. Um, the second point, though, is that it doesn't really make sense, does it? Because if you're replacing six units with eight units at a higher rent, that doesn't really fit with the objects and purposes of the pilot program in any event. So I'd suggest to you that that's what that eligibility requirement is there for. Um, and that in this case, this particular project doesn't, um, qualify. But where does that leave the developer? That leaves the developer going back and speaking with the residents about the Bellaclava option that's been provided, because I think you are hearing that we do want, um, density in our neighborhood. It just needs to fit, as Joyce Murray said, with the character of the neighborhood.
So you're saying there's other sites in the neighborhood, if they want to accomplish the height and density, that are contemplated in this development, that this is not compliant with the policy guidelines and that there are alternatives? It's been suggested, I mean, of course, the, the property owner could have, at any time over the last decade, uh, gone up to four-story condo, but I guess there's more benefit now to going six stories with a rental component to make the numbers work. Uh, do you have any comment generally on that approach?
Well, I mean, I think that this is going to be a highly profitable project with the rental approach, right? I mean, you're, you're, again, you're not talking about a, um, you're talking about a fifty percent increase over existing rent um, for the MERP units. But then you also have rents that you'll be able to charge for a six-story building that has an ocean view. So this is, this is a highly profitable project. Um, I think you have to judge the project also that's before you. Um, and if it, if it doesn't meet the criteria, it doesn't, it doesn't, um, preclude the developer from coming back with another project.
Thanks, uh, we're at the five minutes, so just want to thank you so much, and there are no other questions. Um, thanks so much. Clerks, I've got this weird thing on my screen, public hearing screen, that says it's going to turn off. Um, it's gone away, but, uh, I'm just going to keep going unless there's, uh, some other issue. Okay.
It is the clerk here, Mayor Stewart. Um, I think it was just the cress-tron, I think we're okay, so you can proceed. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thanks. Uh, we're going to move on now to our next speaker. We've got, um, let's see. Just pulling my list up here. Great, we've got, um, uh, uh, Leila Harris.
Hi there, this is Leila Harris, can you hear me?
We sure can, up to five minutes, please, whenever you're ready.
Okay, thank you. So I am a resident of Kits, my name is Leila Harris, and I am opposed to this development, and I urge you to vote against it. I'm going to speak to three primary reasons for my opposition. The first is problems with the proposal itself and the current form and the specifics that are in front of us. The second relates to the process and the need for more consultation, engagement, and also the concerns about the role that the city has played in this particular process. And the third point is simply that there are alternatives that need to be considered and explored, as we were just discussing. So to the first point, in terms of what's before us, um, the point was very nicely laid out just now by Sarah Hanson in terms of the eligibility for this with respect to MERP. I think if you read the language in terms of the underutilized sites and also the, the three existing rental units, it's quite clear that the city is playing games here. Um, the city is being disingenuous by moving forward, and it's actually not fair actually to the developers to move forward and to-
I'm just going to stop you there, Speaker, we don't tend to use terms that disparage the character of people here, so disingenuous would be one of those words that's a little out of bounds. Okay, no problem, go ahead.
I, I feel like it actually fosters a sense of distrust with residents when the city chooses when rules apply and when they don't apply for, uh, reasons that seem vague and unclear, you know, because there is things written down with respect to zoning, and in this case, with respect to MERP eligibility, that seem to be skirted in this instance. Um, the point also that was just made, I think is very important, and I just want to underscore, if you're talking about the addition of only two additional, uh, moderate, uh, rental units, income rental units, also at a higher rent, there's not the benefit that would be needed here to meet any eligibility requirement for this program. The second point that relates to that, in terms of the proposal and some of the problems with it, relate to the neighborhood fit and context. Uh, so this has also been emphasized by a number of previous speakers. The fact that, that on Fourth Avenue, there are no six-story buildings, most are three and a half with a sunken first floor, this really is out of character, and I also find it to be very problematic that they didn't provide, uh, the design rationale and pay attention to the context with the proposal in front of you. Related to this as well, I just want to emphasize for those who are maybe less familiar with the site, that immediately adjacent to the site, you have one and a half-story bungalows. And so the proportion here really is a big consideration with respect to that context as well, not just the neighboring apartment buildings on Fourth. Here you have very small setbacks, which at the south edge are only six feet. Um, you have big issues with respect to shading that will really affect, uh, the neighbors. So to my mind, if you think about what are the benefits of this project, and here again, we have the addition of two moderate-income units, actually at a higher price, as we've just said, but there's actually considerable drawbacks and, uh, issues, especially with respect to the immediate neighbors, which I don't think meet the criterion in terms of being able to push these benefits, um, at the expense of the neighbors. So there are a number of problems with the current proposal, it's not to the right scale, it's not compliant with the zoning, it's out of context, and it has too much adverse impact on the neighborhood, especially the immediate neighbors. The second concern relates to process, and I've already mentioned that I find that the sort of arbitrary application of rules in different instances leads to a considerable sense of distrust in terms of the city and zoning and planning processes as well. If you look at the fact that there's been a ba-, about a five-to-one ratio in terms of male against the proposal, uh, compared to more, about a hundred that have been for the proposal that were submitted, and nonetheless, the city would like us to move forward with this, really, uh, sort of raises some concerns for me. On the same point, I would say that I think neighborhood planning is important and central as is consultation, and these have not been done particularly well in this instance. The other thing that I would like to emphasize, that I found actually a little bit chilling, uh, based on earlier portrayals that were given to us in the earlier meetings. Here we were told that residents were in discussions with the developers, they were making progress, things were going well, the residents and neighbors' needs were being considered, and it was the city who was told those people involved in those discussions to stop and stay the course. Um, so again, this is extremely concerning to me, and I would say it's actually not what we should expect from our city, and it actually feels entirely inappropriate that people in the planning office, or whoever it was, uh, would force a stop to those negotiations and work to push this forward. And again, I would ask, on whose interest was that done? The third point I'd like to emphasize with the quote-
We're at the five minutes, uh, we're, we're at the five minutes, thanks very much, but you do have a question.
There are options, there are options, and the Bellaclava option is one that I'll put forward you, other options, go ahead.
Thanks, yeah, uh, so Counselor Hardwick, you have up to five minutes, and if you could, uh, limit your preambles a bit and get right to the questions, that would be great, thank you.
What motivated you, excuse me, what motivated you to speak this evening?
Yeah, I was concerned about the process that I had observed in terms of consultation and how the neighbors had been treated in terms of their objections to this point, which became all the more so when I heard all of the other speakers, and for instance, what I just mentioned, the whole process where- and for instance, what I just mentioned, the whole process where there had been a discussion that was proceeding and that was actually productive, that was, they were encouraged to stop on behalf of the city. So I'm someone who cares a lot about process and sort of consultation and neighborhood governance and all of these sorts of issues, and equity and sustainability. And in this case, I don't feel like the city is really working in a way that seems to be working and taking seriously the neighborhood concerns, and that very much concerns me.
On the subject of equity and sustainability, how, how do you connect that to this development? What's your background?
Yeah, my background is in equity and sustainability. I, I teach at the university on those topics. And I'll just say, you know, I think there are some real considerations that the city needs to be moving forward with, with respect to affordable housing, as we've just been discussing. What are the different ways we can achieve that? Of course, with sustainability, we also have to look ahead to think about all of the different issues, whether it's respect to carbon emissions, transport options, green space, et cetera. But I'll just say that the other thing I focus on a lot is process and governance process and inclusive governance. And so those are the issues that I find most acute in this instance in terms of how do we take concerns seriously and then moderate our processes accordingly to deal with those. And so here, you know, I do think that the neighbors have been very genuine in terms of trying to work with the developer and propose other options that would still achieve living space and also hopefully meet affordability goals. So I'd like those to be considered more seriously moving forward. The other thing, could I just say that there has been a lot of talk, of course, precisely around affordability and this sort of equity lens? And there's a way in which it sort of sounds good, and of course, we all want that to happen, but it doesn't have to be a giveaway to a developer under the guise of affordability. Just look again at the numbers in terms of we're gaining two units at a higher price. So that feels a little bit like affordability washing. It's not a sort of genuine effort, honestly. And, you know, we're giving also the subsidies and other things to this developer. I would want to see much more benefit in terms of affordability, if that's the route we're going.
Affordability washing, can I use that?
Oh, please. You'd be encouraged to. I feel like there's been a tendency to always look to the developers to solve these problems, where in fact, most of the problems are stemming from, you know, the conduziation of most of our rentals and the longer duration of how this has unfolded. And I'm sure that there can be some developments that will help us with these goals, but I think we have to be very judicious about which ones we're willing to subsidize and move forward and make sure that they're actually providing those benefits to us as a city.
So in essence, what you're saying is we need an adjudication process as we're looking at these proposals as opposed to promoting them?
I would, I would say a much higher bar, you know, in terms of the two units. That's really not enough to give, you know, nearly double the FSR that otherwise would be allowed, and also the subsidy. I mean, those are big giveaways, and you would expect a very big payback in terms of something that looks, you know, much stronger on the affordable housing side. I also think we have to be very careful about, you know, how much have the landowners earned on this over time? How much do they standard earn? Why should we be subsidizing? And also giving, you know, so much extra FSR where there's not, again, some clear payback in terms of our social and environmental goals that we'd like to see met with these sorts of developments.
Well, thank you very much, those are all my questions.
Thanks, Counselor Weep, up to five minutes.
Yeah, my first question to the speaker is, did you listen to the owner's opening?
I did, yeah. Yeah, I've listened to everything.
Okay, and so what do you take from someone that seems to be a long-term Vancouverite who's wanting, or Kitsellano resident, who knows the space well, wants to create something that's going to be in his family, their family for a long time? And so, and how have those conversations, have you felt, gone from the community with the developer?
Yeah, I wasn't involved in the direct conversations that apparently occurred last year. So I'm going more from the understanding that they went well in terms of having made some progress. So I'd much rather ask the people who are actually engaged in those conversations. And I was just sort of, underscore, it was the developer's presentation who said, "We were discussing with the community, and the city told us to stay the course." And that's when my sort of heart stopped. Like, why would the city not encourage that sort of back and forth and discussion with the neighbors to find an option that might be suitable and still meet everybody's goal? So that's when I felt particularly shocked that the city wouldn't encourage such a process to make sure it's something that would be meaningful and accepted by the neighbors.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that.
Okay, thanks, that's it for questions, and we're going to move on to the next speaker. We've got Jan Pearce, speaker number 16.
Hello, can you hear me?
Sure can, up to five minutes, please.
Thank you. My name's Jan Pearce, I live in Vancouver. I've been volunteering with West Kitsellano Residents Association for many years. I'm opposed to this rezoning, but I and many other residents want to move beyond the usual process whereby we're just come in and say we're opposed. Instead, we want to show how neighborhoods can work with developers collaboratively to put forward proposals that have community support. We want to help meet citywide goals of supplying rental housing, and we also realize we have to give adequate returns to developers. To that end, we were really fortunate last fall to have Scott Hine, one of the city's foremost urban designers, agree to help us come up with an alternative to this proposed building. And as well, we were fortunate because the Millers and James Evans were willing to talk to Scott and us and consider alternatives, and we really appreciate that they were willing to talk with us. So over the last few months, I have learned a lot about building form and how an efficient form can allow for density and rental housing on small sites without resulting in an inappropriate building. Scott came up with a townhouse over apartment design with a floor space ratio of two or a bit above, 40 to 50% above the current FSR allowed under RM4, but in a design that will fit into the neighborhood context. This is because it uses its floor area efficiently. Each unit has its own entrance, and there's no space wasted on elevators, stairs, and hallways. This reduces mass, creates more livable units, and fits into the neighborhood. It also became clear to me that the proportion of space wasted grows larger and larger the smaller the site. And this site is much, much smaller than any other MERP site, about half the next smallest MERP. So there's 21,823 square feet of floor area in the building. The actual living area inside the suites is just over 16,000 square feet. 25% of this building is taken up in space that will never be lived in. Floor layouts show this clearly. That lost space directly contributes to the massing that creates unnecessary negative impacts. Trying to fit a MERP project like this onto this small site should be considered a pilot project learning exercise. It's just not a good candidate for this kind of building typology and increased FSR and height. And Scott's ideas will also be more COVID-friendly with separate entrances rather than the shared elevators and stairs. It will use less concrete and have larger setbacks for greenery. James Evans has agreed that this is financially feasible. The Millers are interested, and it will have the support of residents. So there is a better alternative, and this can be a win-win, an innovative form of missing middle rental housing and also of a more collaborative planning process. I am confident that after more detailed design, it can also be a MERP project. The city should be open to innovative rental projects that have neighborhood support, yet it seems that a policy door that encourages this kind of innovation does not exist. It will have to be opened by you, City Council. In contrast, the current proposal doesn't meet MERP or RM4 guidelines in three ways. It doesn't transition to the neighboring sites. The sixth-floor stepback is only four feet wide, not as wide as the balconies. This is not usable outdoor space and only on the sixth floor. And the rear yard relaxation means it's only 12 feet wide minus the balconies, so only six feet are left on a very shallow site. Despite the words about trees along the lane and urban agriculture, there simply isn't room. The scale of the building becomes fully apparent when you think about this building stretching virtually the full length of the site. And it also means that sunlight will be blocked into the yards of the Santa Barbara. A look at the site plan shows just how far this building will extend at full height. And the impacts are greater because the Santa Barbara is built like the normal RM4 design with patios two to three feet below grade. That's not a transition, nor does it fit into neighborhood context. And there are more than three existing rentals on the site, and those points have been made very well. A vote against this rezoning is not a vote against the Millers. They're nice people, but based on our conversations, they're very interested in doing a development like this, and in fact, it's likely their preferred option, and it's what they were looking to do for many years. The other evening, I also wanted to say, James Evans showed you a map with the results of his search for purpose-built rental housing in our neighborhood. He said he found only 366 purpose-built rental units.
It's just five seconds.
So I went back, okay, I'm almost done, and looked at B.C. assessment. I found more than 500 more units than the 366, more than twice as many. In closing, one sentence, can I just?
Go ahead, you do have a question.
I just, we're excited about this excellent opportunity, and we think we can create a win-win.
Thanks, Counselor Hardwick, up to five minutes.
Thank you very much. Are you familiar with the RM4 design guidelines?
Yes, I am, I've been looking at them quite a bit because the planning report says that, that this is compatible with the RM4 guidelines. But when I read them, if you look at the intent of the RM4, it says it, it's to ensure compatibility with new development with the existing physical character of the neighborhood. And it says that in the design, it should be located to minimize privacy conflicts and overshadowing, and yet there's so many windows looking down into the rear yard of the Santa Barbara, and another set of windows and balconies looking down into the house behind. It doesn't meet that, and they're supposed to be compatible with predominant physical character of the surrounding neighborhood. Doesn't meet that. It says the yard should only be reduced, and they should normally be consistent with the established setbacks, and yet they're relaxing those. So I don't see how it meets the RM4 guidelines at all.
All right, so it does beg the question, why have guidelines? I guess they're.
And if we could just stick with the questions and save the commentary after the debate, thanks.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So what gives you any confidence whatsoever that there's an opportunity to go back and work with, with the property owner or the developer on this site as you've described?
Well, you know, I haven't been at every meeting with Mr. Evans. I've met the Millers. I think, you know, Mr. Evans said that he went to the planning department with, we've had two different options that we've come up with, but I do think the second one that Scott developed is way better because it meets so many different things and provides a large number of units, and I think has potential to still be a MERP project. So he's, I think they're very open to it. They actually have gone to the planning department and discussed it, and I, I've talked to Mr. Evans on the phone. He was very open to discussing all of this and, and did say that he, you know, he penciled it out, and it can work. So, you know, I think if, if council says, "Look, we want to go back. This is not the right project for this site. We still want rental housing. We want the potential to do a MERP if we possibly can." I, I think that they'll definitely come to the table. And I, I feel bad because I think he is, we are far down this route that I don't think we should ever have gone down. And so he wants to get something done quickly. I understand that, that's what I've heard. But on the other hand, we all have to live with this development, and I think in the long term, he will be quite happy with, with the kind of development that will come forward.
There's a perception that if you reject an application, that it's going, it can't be brought forward again for consideration in an amended form. Have you heard that argument?
I don't think, I think that this would be quite a different project in many ways because we're likely looking at two, 2.1, 2.2 FSR, everything about it, the design, the way the, the units would have. What we never got to was the idea of actually determining how many units of apartments would be underneath the townhouses up above. But it could be 10, it all depends on the size that would work the best for everybody, and how many of those could be MERPs, and whether you could have lock-off suites inside the townhouses. I mean, I think it would be a totally different application. I can't see it coming forward as the same one. I, I mean, I don't know, you'll have to talk to, ask staff about that, I guess.
No, I just wondered if that was something that you'd heard because there's another application that had been rejected that's coming back with something that had been worked on by the community that everyone was agreeing, agreeing on now. So I was just wondering.
I know. No, I think that's a really interesting precedent because at the time, there was all these, you know, there was a huge outcry that how could council turn something down? But now, later, now a new design is coming forward, and the community is happy, the developer's happy, so I think it is a good news story that shows this can work.
Hope springs eternal, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Counselor Dominado, questions up to five minutes.
Thanks, Mayor, and thanks, Ms. Pearce. Just wanted to fill up, I was going to clarify, in the alternative proposal that you're describing, did, did you know the number of townhomes and apartment dwellings?
Well, so when, in the alternative, the one that Scott has been looking at, so we think the number would be somewhat less than the 35. It's easy, very easy to get to 20. I have a, a development that, not too far from me, there's another one on Fourth on a small site, and it was a total, complete renovation of an existing rental building. And they got 17 units, but there's huge amounts of backyard. It doesn't fill up the site at all. So, you know, I think in the twenties, mid twenties would be very doable. It depends, would you do, you know, like 400 square foot one bedrooms? Or are you going to do 323 square foot studios? I mean, this is the kind of discussion that we were just getting into when the referral report came down and we weren't able to discuss it anymore. So, you know, we don't have those final numbers yet, but we hope, we think.
So you have a sense of things. Can I just clarify something with you? You indicated in your comments, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, that this proposal, which was just a concept being discussed or floated, is something that the Millers, I don't know, would have preferred or did prefer? And I'm just curious about that because I did ask both the applicants about their motivation around this development and whether the alternative was something that they were wanting to table, and that was not the sense I got. But I would just like some clarification from your perspective.
Well, so we do know that Mr. Evans went and did talk to the planning department, and they told him to stay the course, and then he went back with his latest option. But they said there was no policy door for a straight market rental. So, but in, from the conversation that I had with him on the phone, and there were other people there, he said that he was going to take this to the Millers. And, you know, he would pencil it out, he'd get back to Scott, say, find out, you know, in his mind, is this a viable option or not? And then he was, he went and he did take it to the Millers, and Scott has said that he met with them, and they were quite interested in it. Now, I do think that the time, you know, I think that they're, they would like to move ahead with this, but first, and I actually, I did meet with the Millers when this all first happened, and we said, "Well, why aren't you doing this? Why aren't you doing that?" And he said, "Well, I've been told I can't do that." So I just, I, I have the impression that although they would like at this, you know, at this late date, they definitely want to see if this is going to get approved, and then they can just go ahead. But if it isn't approved, I do think that in the longer term, they will not be unhappy with the results. And I mean, our, our reputation as a neighborhood is on the line too, isn't it? To make sure that we make this work and make sure that we go out to our residents and say, "Okay, this may not be ending up quite what you, you want. It won't be three stories, and it won't be quite so green, and it's going to have, you know, but here's what we're getting in return. We're getting better than it was, and we're getting large numbers of, you know, increased number of rental units, and we're going to try to our very best to do whatever is needed to get affordable MERP units in there as well."
Okay, thanks for that clarification, I appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
That's it for, that's it for questions, thanks so much, and we're going to move on to. And we're going to move on to the next speaker. Okay, counsel, we're at 10 after eight here, and our next speaker, speaker number 17 of 65, is Devin Hessek.
Good evening, Mayor and members of City Council. My name is Devin Hessek, and I'm here tonight because metaphorically, I'm wearing several hats. As a Vancouver resident, as well as a homeowner, a person with a disability, and a member of the city's Jericho working, Land Working Group, I'm here to support this application. Obviously, I'm not speaking on behalf of that body, as while we may not be the most diverse bunch, we sure are opinionated. In fact, a quick look to the letters correspondence shows that one of my friends, Larry Binge, is actually opposed to this project. I hope he doesn't mind referring, me referring to him as that, but since Justin Trudeau, Stephen Harper, and you, Mayor Stewart, can all sit in the same chamber and refer to one another as friends, I think I can have some leeway too. Besides, I do genuinely enjoy Larry's company. We actually bumped into each other and had a good chat at this project's open house. I think both of us, with or partially because of our duties to the working group, but also because we have clear ties to the area too. Though what I saw that night proved to me that you don't live and need to live in a neighborhood to love it, or for that matter, contribute to it. It's been over a year since then, so I can't remember exactly how many people joined us at the planetarium. And it certainly doesn't help that many came in, asked when or how they could rent a home in this building, and then left when they found that this process still had years left to go. That's why I'm so disappointed that so many of you voted against holding this hearing. My role has taught me how hard it is to get people to engage when they support a home they need, when they're literally worrying about where to live tomorrow. More than that, it insults the real, genuine work your staff and the members of the applicant team have done to reach out to the residents of this neighborhood. As this open house was well-attended, even though it was held only days before the provincial state of emergency was declared. I understand it's easy to pull victims to misinformation. We have to be on our guard. Given your role, I can see why you would worry a community that wasn't listened to, but that's not the case here. A simple look at the letter submitted shows this project, at the letter submitted against this project, shows that hundreds were submitted within minutes of each other, like a dumped-out email list. Meanwhile, the petition against it is actually opposed to the 2019 version that was proposed, not this 2020 concept. As the staffs and the architects listed don't match with the information before you tonight, as your staff note, your approval would be conditional, your approval tonight would be conditional on requiring even more changes, like a reduction in the building's overall height. Personally, I don't think that's necessary, as there are many other six-floor buildings that fit well with their four-floor strata neighbors in our city. I think this one would too, and I really appreciate how its corner amenity space helps promote a good neighborhood interaction. Maybe this is one of the benefits you get when you have a local family proposing a development. As this council recently voted to express concerns about REITs, it'd be more than a little hypocritical to reject their efforts. Of course, I'm not an idiot, or at least not a big enough one to think they're acting as a charity. Still, I can't help but find it commendable that be opted to undergo this long process and provide eight moderate-income rental homes that will be affordable to a couple making, a couple making minimum wage and are tied to the unit. It sure sounds a lot better for our community than an imaginary 5-4, 100% market rental building, or the already permitted four-floor strata one. So I suppose I'll be looking for a third bedroom myself in a few years. I'm not that short-sighted, as I know our own businesses are trying not just for customers, but for workers. Whether it's those who serve us food, teach our children, and are soon, hopefully, all give us a shot in the arm, everyone deserves the opportunity to make it to a land or an even better place to live. Before I end, let me leave you with this rhetorical question. If taller rental buildings drive up property values, and Kitsellano is a paragon of a small-town feel, then why have homes here gone up in value from $80,000 to over $2 million? For all of these reasons, and that I'm nearly out of time, I urge you to join me in supporting these homes.
Thanks so much for calling in this evening. I don't see any questions for you, so I'm going to move on to the next speaker, who is speaker number 18, Harold Lepin.
Hey, folks. Are you there?
Fine, thank you. Up to five minutes, whenever you're ready.
Okay. Evening, Mayor, Council. I'm Harold Lepin, and speaking in support of the Fortin and Balaklava project. I've lived in the neighborhood now for almost 30 years, so, and I've been constantly struggling to find decent, affordable rent, as have many of our friends who live in the neighborhood as well. For three years now, I've managed a building in Kitsellano. Within those three years, constantly trimming away 20 to 30 applicants on one suite that comes available, and that's only running a three-hour, four-hour ad online. Fourth Avenue is a perfect location for it, and I, it's close to the bus lines, amenities, et cetera. In closing, I just feel that the neighborhood has been desperately needing more rents, and I hope the project goes through. And I'll send it back to you guys.
Thanks so much for calling in. I don't see any questions for you, but I appreciate your input this evening, and I'm going to move on to the next speaker.
Request for a conference representative has been initiated. To cancel this request, please press star zero again.
I have to ask that person to steer on to this project? Let's see, we've got John Pretty, speaker number 19.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Can you hear me?
Sure can. Up to five minutes, whenever you're ready.
Very good. Thank you. My name is John Pretty, and I'm a condo owner at 36 West Fourth Avenue in Vancouver. I oppose the rezoning of 3084 West Fourth Avenue at 2010 Balaklava because the proposed building is a poor design. It is oversized in height and in area. It, as it stands right now, it's an unsightly square box design, and from the details that I have been reading up on, it's, the setbacks relaxation leaves very little room for trees and a green footprint. And for me specifically, it's going to cast a very dark shadow in the afternoon on my courtyard because I live directly east of the proposed new development. I do share, however, the city's objective vision to get more secure rental housing, but I think we need to do it with a more suitable design for the neighborhood. I'm concerned that this will set a precedent and pave way for similar rezonings throughout the neighborhood, and we must resist converting Vancouver to a sea of ugly, high-density boxes, and there's no buildings on Fourth as it stands right now that are higher than four stories. The West Kitsellano Residents Association and We Love Kits have an alternative that I think is very seriously worth considering. It's a more harmonious proposal. It's the Balaklava that achieves almost as many rental units, and it's a more balanced approach that I think will be more balanced and appropriate for our neighborhood. It may, it may require the city opening up some policy doors to make it happen, but I think we should consider it. Let's work together and show that you value our neighborhood input while simultaneously addressing much-needed rental housing. And again, I think that we should seek a third option that is better, and it's called the Balaklava solution, the Balaklava option. Thank you very much. That concludes my comments.
Thank you. There are no questions for you, so we'll move on to the next speaker. Who is? Sorry, my list is a bit messy here. We have speaker number 20, Suzanne Munson.
Hello?
Suzanne, hi there. You have up to five minutes, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Suzanne Munson. I'm a resident of Vancouver, and I'm speaking this evening in opposition to the development of 3084 West Fourth Avenue and 2010 Balaklava Street as currently proposed. I grew up in Vancouver, and I have lived in Kitsellano for over 16 years, five years as a renter, and over 11 years as a homeowner. I'm a supporter of We Love Kits and a member of the West Kitsellano Residents Association. I do support development of these properties to increase rental housing, and would be supportive of the Balaklava option or similar, as proposed by We Love Kits, speaker number five. But I do not propose, sorry, I do not support the proposed design for the following reasons. The building is too tall, oppressive, and out of scale for the small lot size. The setbacks are too small and inconsistent with neighboring buildings such as the Santa Barbara and the Delano. There is no room for large backyard trees, which negatively affects privacy, increases shadowing, and noise for neighbors. There is also very limited on-street parking for the number of units, impacting parking available to residents on West Fifth and other neighboring streets. While many residents take transit and ride bikes, people also have and use cars. The big-box design is out of character for the neighborhood, which does not meet the neighborhood fit test required of the MERP program, and would set an unappealing precedent for the area, both in design aesthetic as well as in height. This area of Kits is known for its California bungalows or craftsmen homes. The proposed building design is a jarring opposition to that aesthetic. I live on West Fifth, and this box shape and dense design does not allow for a gentle transition into the neighboring street scape. When listening to the developer speak last Tuesday, he mentioned he had met with members of the community and was presented with an alternative building design. He went on to state he had a discussion with city planning staff and was told to quote, "stay the course," unquote, as you've also heard this evening. Given that a community petition and hundreds of correspondence was received by the city in opposition to the development's design, I am wondering why city staff would discourage the developer to consider an alternative design and advise them to quote, "stay the course," end quote. This response seems completely counter to the intention of a public consultation process and flies in the face of the neighborhood fit criteria of MERP. Densifying a neighborhood without sincere consideration on how best to do so in a way that minimizes negative impacts to the neighborhood while still creating new or maintaining rental housing is a recipe for neighborhood tension, conflicts, and loss of quality of life for all. I believe a better solution for our neighborhood can be found by taking the time to engage with the community and thoughtfully redesign the proposed development into a rental building that works for the entire community, such as the Balaklava option proposed by We Love Kits. Thank you for the time to speak this evening.
Thanks so much. Going to move on to the next speaker? Yes, I don't see any questions for you. So we'll move on to the next speaker. Let's see, we're on speaker number 21, Cynthia Lewis.
Yes, good evening.
Hi there. Whenever you're ready, up to five minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council, and thank you and to the staff of the city for your hard work and time. I'm speaking on behalf of my husband, John Richards, and myself to oppose the rezoning of this property under its current design. We are homeowners of a duplex that's third and Balaklava one block from the property in question. My points are three, and you've heard some of this, and I would agree that within the MERP policy, this is a very poor fit. You state in the policy the need for integration into the architecture of the surrounding neighborhood as well as notable transitional features. The wording of what sites qualify for consideration is very poor and open to misinterpretation, all kinds of interpretation. Most concerning, however, is the statement from the owner and developer that 35 units on this site is the only way they can make a profit going forward. I'm wondering about the ratio of 20% of controlled units, and I'm wondering if there isn't some sort of total value here. For example, if the building was 100 units and 20 of them needed to be controlled rents, one could see that that's more appealing than eight units out of 35. But in this case, the size of the site, it's only two city lots, squeezing a box of 35 units onto that size site is never going to be appropriate. And the FSR3 is simply too dense and requires six floors, and the neighborhood ramifications of that have been grossly underplayed in the planning department's analysis section of the report. Our neighborhood, as you've heard here many times this evening, is one of mixed housing, with many older homes refurnished and containing basement suites or rebuilt as duplexes. They currently provide a range of affordable rentals, and this is a positive and necessary goal to increase secured rentals and affordability, but not by sacrificing the neighborhood. As you've heard again, our objections, and my objections, my husband, revolve around the too-small lot and the oversized box, which the current design represents. And eight units is, wouldn't even begin to, say, fulfill the need for more affordable housing. In fact, it would be more efficient to, the owner needs to give first, write first refusal of the current rents that are on that site. I support the alternative that the We Love Kits organization has been working around the Balaklava option, and it's very encouraging that we could actually do something that's a compromise here. My third point has to do with neighborhood plans, and there's been some excellent points made about the vacant lots around Kits and how this project is a one-off in a bigger context of what might happen and what could happen. That's a very positive way forward. The long-term goal of the city should be to address the needs of the diverse neighborhoods it serves and to develop processes that reduce the current atmosphere, which is frankly one of confrontation and mistrust. Does it have to be this way? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time this evening. I don't see anybody on the list to ask you questions, so I'll move on to the next speaker. Let's see here. We have, next, we have speaker number 22, Zoe Younger.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for your time today. My name is Zoe Younger. I've been a resident and homeowner in the neighborhood since 2009, and I live just a couple of blocks away from the proposed project. I also own a small business that operates on West Broadway, and I've been a local volunteer in the community, on the board at Kits House, and also as a member of the Block Watch community over about the last decade. While I support the densification and the creation of affordable and stable rental housing in all parts of the city, I oppose the development at Fourth and Balaklava as proposed. While I agree with many of the comments brought forward by previous speakers opposed, I will focus my comments in three specific areas. First, while part of the reason this building is being considered is the introduction of more rental units, the introduction of only two additional renting units, the rents of which will exceed the current rental cost by 50%, is inconsistent with the MERP pilot project's intention. I also note that many of the current homes in the area have rental unit suites, and many of the condos are privately rented. This rental stock was not accounted for in the presentation made by the developer last week, creating an inaccurate representation of available affordable housing as justification for this project. It is often these in-home units that actually offer more moderate rental rates and support diversity of both housing and neighbors in the neighborhood. Secondly, this proposed development is disproportionate and inconsistent with all of the other buildings nearby. The current zoning allows for significant densification along this arterial street, and a four-story MERP or residential building would be consistent with the current zoning along West Fourth and would not contradict the current architectural vernacular of the neighborhood. It is unfortunate that Mr. Miller has been frustrated in trying to work with the city's zoning requirements for the last eight years, and that he was personally invited by a member of the city's planning team to apply under the MERP program instead of identifying multiple options for building under existing zoning. If the city is prepared to make exceptions to zoning requirements under MERP, it would be consistent for the city planning department to also demonstrate enough flexibility under the current zoning to allow Mr. Miller a reasonable development and densification option for the site in question under the current zoning. With that said, I ask the Mayor and Council nonetheless to vote against this proposal based on its lack of merit and not on the amount of time and energy the planning department has invested, or that Mr. Miller and his team have invested in the development of this MERP proposal as they have tried to navigate the quagmire of city bylaws and zoning to get something built on the site. My hope is that a new proposal under RM4 zoning for this site could be reviewed under an expedited process to offset the painful delays Mr. Miller has endured thus far. Finally, this design fails to meet the MERP criteria for the building to fit the predominant character of the neighborhood. The current proposed development is out of place, out of scale, and inconsistent with the current style along West Fourth, which includes four-story condos and MERPs on either side of the street. The exterior appearance violates the character of the neighborhood and will be a visual stain on the landscape. There is an insufficient transition from the current scale of development or that of the area to that being proposed. There are several examples of buildings with a mix of low and moderate income units as well as commercial strata units, just two blocks west of the proposed development between Trudge and Blenheim. There, a range of types and costs of housing are provided without an assault on the visual landscape and the disproportionate shadowing of neighboring properties that the proposed project brings with it. Photos have been submitted separately to you through the online portal that show the articulation setbacks and green space in that block, which are consistent with the neighborhood feel and provide effective moderation of the characterological difference between the craftsmen bungalows and the three- and four-story buildings across the alley. I urge council to consider the potential implications of one-off zoning and the infrastructure that services the neighborhood. Water, sewer, and transportation pressures must be considered when projects exceed current anticipated density and zoning. The current infrastructure is not designed to support the kind of developments being proposed throughout the area. If this is indeed deemed a one-off, then it implies that the proposed building is not consistent with the current character, land use zoning of the neighborhood, and should not proceed. As I understand the MERP guidelines and the current proposed As I understand the MRRP guidelines and the current proposed development, the proposed development stretches beyond the intended height, scale, and footprint contemplated by the MRRP pilot and fails to meet the criteria set out in the MRRP program for eligibility as well as failing to fit into the character of the neighborhood. Finally, we heard from Carla last week that the MRRP program is the only current available way to rezone this property for this scale of development. The intent of rezoning restrictions is to prevent development that is inconsistent with the character and use of the neighborhood. The reliance on MRRP as a justification for an out-of-scale development seems to overextend the intent of the program, especially since alternative proposals for the site could also create additional affordable rental housing units under the current RM4 zoning. There's no question that this proposed building itself has many great features. Unfortunately, in my view, is located in the wrong place. I really do urge Council to vote against this proposal, and we have it to answer any further questions that you might have.
Thanks so much. I don't see any questions for you, so well, thank you for coming in this evening, and I'll move on to the next speaker. Council, the next speaker is Holly Hillborn, speaker number twenty-three.
Hi, can you hear me?
Sure can. Please go ahead.
Great. Okay. Thank you, Mayor and councilors, for listening to our concerns this evening. My name is Holly Hillborn. I'm a resident of the twenty-nine, three-thousand block of West Fifth in Kitsellano and have been living here since 2004. I am opposed to this rezoning under the current design. I am not opposed to providing rental housing at this site, but I am opposed to the height and the design which is out of character. I personally believe the development is not in the best interest of the surrounding neighborhood and is too aggressive for the lot size, which will allow for very limited green space. Its height of six stories and proposed box shape is certainly not compatible with any of the turn-of-the-twentieth-century buildings in the area, some of which have been documented in the nineteen-ninety illustrated book titled Vanishing Vancouver, written by Michael Kluckner. This book stresses the historical importance of preserving period buildings in the areas of Kitsellano and Vancouver. Sadly, many of the buildings pictured in this book have vanished. However, there is now an opportunity for the city to recognize and encourage erection of a building on West Fourth with similar character to existing homes and buildings in the surrounding area. Allowing a massive six-story box structure as currently proposed would significantly decrease the sunlight in the surrounding neighborhood. For generations, the residents have defined the character of the area, and I think it's very important that you are giving us a say in what happens in our neighborhood. Currently, along West Fourth Avenue from Burrard to Alma, there are no buildings higher than the standard four stories. The residents are the ones who have supported local business for years and have created a community that makes it attractive for development. I understand that the city of Vancouver uses a community plan to provide clear but flexible framework to guide positive change and development in neighborhoods. I'm curious why there has been no community plan or environmental plan for this area of Kitsellano. We are worried that the six-story building proposed for West Fourth Avenue, if approved, would set a dangerous signal to other developers that the whole character of West Fourth can be changed irrespective of the concerns of the longtime residents. It is important not to turn your back on the past, but we are literally doing this.
Tell us who you're conferencing. My name is Tommy. How can I help?
Oh, hi there. We've just lost our current speaker. May it be an accidental cutoff?
The current speaker? I'm not sure. I know that, is that the reason for the help request or?
There wasn't a help request. We had a speaker that was just kind of in full throttle, giving her speech, and just got cut off when you interrupted there.
Okay. You probably pressed the button there. I'm gonna place you back in the conference. Sorry about that.
Okay, thanks. Clerks, can you figure out what happened there and just try to get us back on track?
... existing buildings in the surrounding area. The Balaclava townhouse-style building option is a better design for rental housing which allows for four stories in height. It's extremely important that Council find a compromise to satisfy both the residents and the developer. This can be done while at the same time providing the needed rental housing. Thank you, and I appreciate your time this evening.
Thanks, Speaker. I'll just admit to you that we had an interruption from the moderator, accidental interruption, and we missed probably thirty to forty-five seconds of your presentation. So happy to give you extra time if there's anything that you would like to reemphasize to us. Speaker, are you still there?
Yes.
Okay. So we did miss about thirty to forty-five seconds of the middle of your presentation. Is there anything that you would like to reemphasize to us?
Point of privilege, Mr. Mayor, is Counselor Dejanova.
Just a second, Counselor Dejanova.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to note that where I heard the speaker come back online was talking about townhomes on Balaclava. I just wanted to share that as that might be a helpful reference for where we missed the thirty seconds.
Thanks. So Speaker, did you kind of catch what I was saying there?
Yes, I just wanted to, I guess maybe, I'm not sure where I cut out, but basically I just wanted to say that the Balaclava townhouse-style building option was a better design for rental housing, and it allowed for the four stories in height. And it's extremely important that Council find a compromise to satisfy both the residents and developer, and this can be done at the same time while providing the needed rental housing. Thank you, and I appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you. And I don't have any questions for you, so thanks again for calling in tonight and apologies for the interruption. I'm gonna move on to the next speaker. Apologies for my puppy barking in the background there. Let's see. Okay, we have Chris Barden, speaker number twenty-four. Chris Barden is next.
Mayor and Council, can you hear me?
Sure can. Up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name's Chris Barden. I'm a resident of Vancouver, and I've lived on West Sixth Avenue for nineteen years as a homeowner and resident. I support this project. I recall when there was rental apartments located across the street where the Delano condos now sit, and it's good to see some rental coming back to this part of Fourth Avenue. Other speakers talked about the potential for another proposal to be considered, but there is no other proposal before Council. And clearly, to make these rental projects work, it seems that they need to be dense. So, you know, this is what we've got that we're, you know, before us in terms of an opportunity. Basically, staff have identified that arterials are good opportunities for adding six-story, the six-story building form, and this building form has been accepted on arterials for many years. It's a concept that's been in place for the city for some time, and it's a way of getting rental homes into neighborhoods, on the fringes of neighborhoods and not located deep within them. I'd note that this is not a six-story building that's being located amid a bunch of one-and-a-half story California bungalows. It's on the margins of the block that's, you know, bounded, as the proponent said, between Alma and McDonald and Fourth Avenue and Broadway, you know, which is basically a sea of single-family homes. This is sort of at the outer edge. So it feels like a place where density could be added with less impact than might otherwise be, and I think that's the sort of rationale that's driven staff and Council to consider the six-story form as a means of adding density to neighborhoods. And I think that this is an appropriate opportunity to apply that. You know, there are lots of us who are single-family homeowners who are sitting pretty and have enjoyed the benefits of living in a single-family house and have a bit of a drawbridge mentality in terms of wanting to pull up that drawbridge after we've arrived and not let anyone else into the neighborhood. And with the changes that have happened to the city, you know, densification and the addition of apartment dwellings is, you know, the only way that we can accommodate the additional arrivals to the city who need affordable places to live. And so accepting some density in our midst is, I think, our obligation as citizens instead of, you know, focusing on a magical view of Vancouver's past, which, you know, is very attractive but really doesn't reflect or accept the fact that the times are changing and, you know, people's needs are changing and people's ability to pay for housing is changing. So I would encourage you to accept this project as a means of addressing this and letting Kitsellano do its part of finding opportunities for young people and others working in situations that suggest that their finances suggest that they need to be renters. This is the sort of opportunity that we need to take up. So that'll conclude my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. You do have a question from Counselor Hardwick. Go ahead, Counselor Hardwick, up to five minutes.
Yes, Chris Barden. Do you work in the property development industry?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Thanks. That's it for questions. Appreciate you phoning in today. All right. Council, we're moving on to our next speaker, speaker number twenty-five, Richard Whitstock.
Hello. Hi, Mayor and Council. Can you hear me?
Sure can. Up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Thank you so much. Thanks for this opportunity to speak. I'm a neighbor. I live a couple of blocks north of the site. I'm literally within five hundred feet of the project, have lived in this lovely neighborhood for over ten years, and I've lived, actually, I've lived in this location for ten years. I've lived in north of Fourth Kits for over fifteen years. I wholeheartedly support this project. I think it's great urban design. I think the height is not an issue. It's a nice punctuation at the end of this block that's already a four-story condo, townhouse sort of expression in that block. I think it's nice urban design. I've looked at the plans. The units are nice. I think two extra stories of height is really not an issue, especially in exchange for eight deeply below-market rental units. I think that is a good deal for the city and a good deal for the community. I've listened to the arguments about the height from some of my neighbors. I'm quite disappointed at what I hear. Specifically, I want to make the point that, you know, I often read about the West Kits Residents Association says this and the West Kits Residents Association says that. They are not representative of me or any of the neighbors that I speak to in my block who are overwhelmingly in favor of this development. Speaking with, you know, my direct neighbor, I'm sure you read all the letters that come in. She wrote a very eloquent letter, Dr. Alex Samuel, about her special needs child and how hard it is for her to get caregivers because the neighborhood has become so much more homogeneous in the twenty years that she and her family have lived in the community. You know, I really urge you to support this great project. As a neighbor, we need more housing diversity in this area. The MRRP program is a good trade-off for the city. Six stories of height is not an issue on a busy arterial street like West Fourth Avenue. And I hear a lot of people bringing up this supposed alternate plan, this four-story stacked townhouse at two FSR. As many on Council may know, I am a developer. I've built hundreds of stacked townhouses in my career, and I think I'm pretty good at it, but I've never achieved a density of over one-point-four FSR. So to hear that, you know, people keep throwing out this alternate plan, like, "Let's not do that. Let's consider this, this Plan B." It's a smokescreen. It's a red herring. It doesn't exist. It's not economically viable. If it was, people would be doing these projects, but they're not. They don't work. There's no such thing as a two FSR stacked townhouse project. It doesn't exist. You can't get more than one-point-two, one-point-three, maybe one-point-four FSR and the economics, which is basically what you would build under RM4 anyway. So the economics are not viable as a rental, especially with any below-market housing at that density. I think that's everything that I had. Thank you so much for listening. Really hope that you approve this project. Thank you.
Thanks for calling in this evening. I don't see any questions for you.
Point of privilege, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Counselor Dejanova, I do have questions, and I'm sorry, I can't get on the queue right now myself.
Okay, sure. Well, put yourself on the queue.
Is the speaker still there? Thank you.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, great. Please go ahead. Counselor Dejanova, up to five minutes.
Thanks very much. I was really intrigued by what you said in trying to achieve greater density and some of the comments that you'd heard tonight and also your own expertise. Do you think that, and you had noted something being a red herring, that's your opinion. You know, we hear from a lot of people who have opinions at these public hearings, but in trying to move forward to close that gap of the middle between sort of the smaller multifamily residential units and then all the way to the other side of it, which would be the, you know, detached, single-family residential home, do you think that this is sort of the direction to get that right supply in this neighborhood? Because that's also a point that's come up, and something that we can consider at public hearing is, is this the right fit for the neighborhood? Is this moving forward in a positive direction? So I was hoping you might be willing to comment on that.
This particular project? The six-story, thirty-five units? Yeah. No, I think it's wonderful. Like, you know, I have no concerns with the height. We need rental housing. I think it's, we need, we need good, and it's a new building, right? This is what everybody keeps forgetting. They're trying to solve all the world's problems with new development. New development, by definition, is the most expensive kind of development, right? But the buildings on this site, I drive by them every day. I stand at the bus stop right in front of them. They're old buildings. They're falling down. They're at the end of their life. There's a lot of the rental stock that we have in this city unfortunately is nearing that point where it's near the end of its life. This MRRP project that the city has devised, or program that the city has devised, is a great way to maintain the affordability that's already on the site by and large, but then create new supply that, you know, in twenty, twenty-five years will be, you know, will truly be our affordable housing supply. And if we don't build it now, then we'll be in the same position now, we'll be in a worse position twenty-five years from now. We haven't built hardly any rental housing over the entire span of my life as an adult in the city of Vancouver, and that's why there's very little affordability out there other than in buildings that were built in the nineteen-sixties and nineteen-seventies. If we had built a ton in the nineties, in the eighties, in the early two thousands, then we would have an aging supply of good rental housing now. But unfortunately, we don't have that. So we have a big gap in the marketplace, and the only way to do it is, to bridge that gap, is to have some, is to have some below-market units. And I know how hard the economics are. I mean, you know, you guys have had Coriolis, and your staff look at these pro formas to death. I mean, we know what the economics on these things are. We know how hard it is to deliver deep affordability. And in this location for two extra stories, I mean, my God. And to hear people on the south side complaining about it, you're not even getting shadowed by it. What is this building doing? It's a beautiful little gem of a building, well-designed, nice urban design, no shadows. You know, it's, I just, I don't get it at all.
I just want to make sure that I also, I asked you because you took the words right out of my mouth and answered one of my questions for me. And just from my experience working in non-market housing and looking at sort of the stock of housing that we have in this city and throughout Metro Vancouver, twenty to twenty-five years is really, you know, that sweet spot where you hit sort of a level of affordability, but you're not overrun by maintenance costs.
Can I just steer you to a question?
And using infrastructure? Is that what you also think we should keep in mind? And thanks, Mayor Stewart.
A hundred percent. You know, we can't always look at these buildings on day one, right? A building has a fifty, sixty-year lifecycle, and we need to analyze these buildings over their entire lifecycle. What is this building going to contribute to the neighborhood and the city over its entire lifecycle? Not what are the rents on day one? Yeah, that's one consideration. But really, we're building for my kids. I mean, my kids, I would love my kids to live in this project. My kids will be, you know, going to university hopefully right around the time this project is finished. It'd be perfect for them.
Thanks so much, and thanks, Mayor Stewart, for allowing that question.
No problem. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That's it for questions. Thanks so much, and we'll go on to the next speaker. Let's see, Council, we're at speaker number twenty-six, Brene Closi-Deveraux.
Good evening.
Hello. You have up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Hi, good evening. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak tonight. So my name is Brecha Closi-Deveraux. It's quite a mouthful, easy to get wrong. I fully, fully support and embrace densification, all forms of homes, mixed, multi-unit dwellings, social supportive housing, co-op, cooperative units, and of course rentals. However... However, I don't support the building form that is being proposed next door. And when I say that next door, that'll become a little bit clearer. So I represent two parties. So I am a homeowner here at the Santa Barbara, which the Santa Barbara is, by now everybody knows, is right next door. And we've been living here for 16 years, my family. We've got pets, we adopted a little girl from India. So we have a full house in one of these units here. We're on the ground floor. And in fact, we're actually at the southwest corner unit immediately, right next to the building, the proposed building. So we're immediately next door. And we have a garden because we're on the ground floor. I'm a keen, keen, passionate gardener. And I make that statement because we're outdoors a lot as a family. When COVID wasn't around, of course, entertaining, et cetera. So I'm also, funnily enough, one of your former speakers, I believe her name was Zoe. I also used to be on the board of Kitz Neighborhood House. So I do a lot of volunteering in the community as well. But the second party that I represent is the Strata Council of the Santa Barbara. So the Santa Barbara, just for those who aren't aware of the property or don't know much about it, has 52 units. And there are over 100 owners and tenants that are here. Many of them are original owners. And the building was built in 1998, so they've been here for 23 years. And just for clarification, our building has over 40% of the units are rental units. And there's no cap. So from a strata perspective, we highly, highly are very supportive from the rental perspective, the rental stock. So the character, I just want to say that I love this neighborhood. It's an incredibly diverse population, I would say. Its character is, well, some would say quaint. And I'm not sure that I would agree with that, but that might be going a little bit far. But in my opinion, it's a very small town, the feel, the character of Kitzalano. And to me, it really matters. It's greatly appreciated. I grew up in Dunbar, and my parents actually still live there. They've been 63 years in the same house. And in fact, my mom is a keen gardener. She's called the teapot lady. And she's been gardening that plot, that land on 27th, just off of Dunbar there, for many, many years. So I'm really familiar with this neighborhood. Having said that, I've also lived and spent time in a bunch of other countries in high-density, larger cities, in the UK, in Germany, in India, et cetera. And I celebrate and have the experience of a myriad type of unique high-density housing solutions that I've seen from low to moderate income, et cetera, all around the world. I've been very fortunate to have seen and experienced that. So just to be clear, my motivation is not to halt the development at all, of course not. I am so strongly for densification. But I would like to advocate a way to meet the needs of both the sides. So on the one side, we have the city understanding that MERC and rentals and lower-income affordable solutions are a priority. We've got the developer, of course, James Evans. He wants to find a workable design solution. And we've heard that from many of the speakers. We've got the landlord owners, the Millers. They want to develop in a sustainable way. And clearly, they've been at it for a period of time. So that's on the one side. But I do believe that it would be fabulous if we could do this and preserve the integrity of Kitzalano's unique neighborhood and those of us who feel the same, that there is another potential option. So just to be clear, in terms of what my feelings are on this project next door, is that the design, and we've heard it a lot, it's a square form, it's bulky, it has a significant amount of height, it's near heritage be, some would say arts and crafts character homes. And one of the other speakers, I think, really summed it up nicely. He was, last week, he said that it wasn't sympathetic. And one of his observations resonated well with me, is that he said it was imposing, it consumes a lot of its lot, and it looms over the neighborhood. And I just thought that is such a, it was a very clear statement to me, the looming at the six stories. So apart from the design, there are a couple of other concerns that I personally have and I would say on behalf of those who live in the building. The shadowing is an issue. And I know there are a few previous speakers that said that wasn't actually the case. We've looked at all the shadowing reports, et cetera. But there would be a lack of sunlight after about 2:00 PM for many of the residents. Because of course, once the sun goes down that way, then with that extra additional two stories, it really, you would lose a lot of sunlight. One of the other big things for me is the tree health. And I know we talked about this, and certainly speaker number five, Cameron mentioned it, the three mature red cedar trees.
I've got to stop you there, speaker. We're over the five minutes.
Oh goodness, okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. And I don't see any questions, but really appreciate you coming in to speak this evening. Council, we're going to move to our next speaker. And I've got Jenny Chen, who's speaker number 27. Jenny Chen. Clerks, do we have Jenny Chen on the line?
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. We are trying to connect her.
Okay.
Mayor Stewart, I am hearing that Jenny Chen has disconnected.
Okay, thanks. Council, I'm just going to go to speaker number 30 and I'm going to give everybody a 10-minute break, just to stretch. So just in case you're cramping up from sitting there. We have number 28, we have Miles Timas.
Yes, hello.
Hi there, you have up to five minutes, please go ahead.
Super, thanks for your time tonight. No, I'm a resident of Vancouver and a homeowner in Vancouver. And I felt quite strongly about phoning in tonight. I'd actually be ashamed as a Vancouverite not to phone in and to support a project like this. First of all, I'd like to just commend the owner and the developer for insisting and persisting in this process to have a rental building built. This is, to me, very unique. You usually see these multimillion-dollar condos go up and that's the end of it. And they sell them out and take their money and move on to the next one. And I think this is fantastic to have a purpose-built rental building, built in Vancouver. We constantly hear about this affordability problem. And the thing with the affordability problem is it's a result of an availability problem. And until you fix the availability problem, you're never going to cure the affordability problem. And in Vancouver, I've lived here all my life, and as everybody that lives here knows, with the geography of Vancouver, we can't just keep expanding outwards. You've got two ways to expand. You can go up or down. And most people don't want to live underground. So you need to expand upwards. And buildings need to get taller and they need to get more units in there. And I think this is a perfect project. And as far as the location, I think if you open a map of Vancouver, you couldn't find a better location for a project like this. And I know the immediate residents are concerned about the six stories, that it's like when the temporary modular homes went in. And everybody said, oh, I don't want that in my neighborhood and it looks horrible and on and on and on. You drive around the city now and they're all over the place, but nobody even notices them. And that's actually done wonders for the city. And I think this is the same thing. The extra two stories, other than some shadowing that's been mentioned, no one really has said why they don't want the extra two stories and the extra units in a project like this. And personally, I hope this does set a precedent for not just that neighborhood, but all of Vancouver to expand it. I can't imagine where it would be in five or 10 years from now, going at the rate we're going. I mean, to be quite honest, at this rate, I don't even think this project could be going in five years. So I think this whole process needs to be sped up. And I think that will really help cure the affordability problem. So I'm definitely in favor of this project. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. You do have a question from councillor Hardwick.
Yes, do you work in the real estate industry?
No, I don't.
You're not in the property development, real estate industry?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much for calling in, speaker. I'm going to move on to the next. Okay, let's see here. We've got 29, speaker number 29 is Jared Anderson. Clerks, do we have Jared Anderson on the line?
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. I'm just double-checking, but it appears no.
Okay, thanks. We'll go to Rick Harris, who's speaker number 30.
And it is the clerk here, Mayor Stewart. We did have Rick Harris on the line.
I'm still here.
Oh, you are? Okay, up to five minutes, please, sir, whenever you're ready.
Okay, thank you. Evening, Mayor Stewart and councillors. Firstly, thank you for your time and the opportunity to speak. As an introduction, my name is Rick Harris and I live a block away from the proposed development. I immigrated to Canada in 1996 and I was a renter for a number of years, living in a basement in Kitzalano before becoming a homeowner in the area. Firstly, let me state that I am opposed to the design and the size as it currently stands. This is not to be confused with the need to develop this site or the need to build affordable rental housing in Vancouver. Here are the key issues that I have issues with. In my humble opinion, the building at Fort in Valaklava is a design that lacks genuine thought and creativity. It is an oversized and overbuilt square box placed on a small piece of land, just 71 feet by 104 feet. Existing zoning and the city's own standards allow for a floor space ratio of 1.45 versus the proposed 2.95, more than double the allowable. Its height is also proposed at 63 feet versus the own standards of 35 feet, again, close to double the current allowable standards. In summary, the building scale is well beyond what is fair or appropriate for neighboring residents. This impact also needs to be accounted for in the decision tonight. What I also struggle with is that this building is being presented as part of an affordability plan. Yet, from what I can see, it's all about maximizing revenue by overbuilding a site with 27 of the 35 units targeted for market-based rents. These market rental rates will likely be magnified for the higher-level units that will have unsurpassed use of Millshaw Mountains and Barad Inlet. Summary, it seems to be more of a property developer's dream versus creating a genuine solution around affordability. There are so many opportunities to expand rental and affordable housing in the area without having to offer property developers sweet, hot subsidies such as the DCL waiver. And for this project, it equates close to $400,000, so they can go bigger and taller to capture greater revenue opportunities while squashing, squashing the neighboring homes and residents under the disguise of low-income housing. Additionally, we live in a time that has access to the biggest range of available building materials and technologies to help us develop beautiful structures. The buildings that typically characterize Kitzalano are part of the city's heritage and fabric. So I ask, please don't let uninspiring design, driven by short-term monetary gains, under the disguise of low-income housing win the day. This concludes my comments and I thank you for your time.
Thanks so much for your time. We don't have any questions for you. So I'll just thank you for your participation this evening, council. It is 9:03, so I suggest we come back at, let's say, 9:13. Give everybody 10 minutes just to do what you need to do. And we'll come back for speaker number 31, Carla Ladira. Thanks, council. We'll see you at 9:13.
Four, five, six. Yeah, you do have quorum now and we're ready to go.
Okay, thanks so much. We have speaker number thirty-one, Carla Ladira.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor Stewart and council. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight in support of the Fourth and Balaklava proposal being considered this evening. I am a resident of Vancouver and a former resident of Kitsalino who moved away from Kits in search of more affordable housing. My children still attend school in Kitsalino and I feel deeply connected to the neighborhood that we didn't want to leave. Had a project like this been a reality at the time, our family may well have made the decision to continue residing in Kitsalino. And I believe that projects like this are vital in retaining the vibrant neighborhood characteristic and make Kitsalino more accessible to a greater range of income levels and make it more desirable as well. Over the years, I've seen rental housing, much like the building that my now-husband and I lived in, torn down and replaced with luxury housing, townhouses or condos, as the neighborhood becomes more and more homogenized. I fear that many more people will be pushed out of Kits, professionals with moderate incomes like myself, or artists, small business owners, and so many others. And that's why this project is exactly what Kitsalino needs. The property this building is proposed for is in a great location for rental housing. It's close to transit, there are lots of restaurants nearby, shopping, easily accessible to downtown, and I think the project fits really nicely into the area, especially as it's fronting the main road at West Fourth, and the residents of this building will support and benefit the local businesses there. Now, despite the fact that many of my comments have already been shared, I wanted to ensure that I share my own personal experiences and encourage you this evening to move this project forward. There have been some individuals opposing this project on the basis of aesthetics, and first of all, aesthetics are subjective. Also, I'm certain that the young professionals facing the prospect of moving from Kits for lack of moderate housing would consider this proposal to be beautiful. Aesthetic is great, but the availability of residential rental housing, which is something seriously lacking right now, is more of a priority. The aesthetic complaints, in my opinion, mainly come down to height, and there needs to be a balance. We know that without density, the opportunity to provide market rental housing is compromised, resulting in more of the typical strata luxury condos. The height is not even dramatically different from the four-story buildings nearby, and the trade-off is excellent. Rental market housing, something the city desperately needs. A purpose-built rental building will address the affordability issue or at least begin to address it. I'm one of the lucky ones. We moved to the Main Street neighborhood and bought a house, but I'm concerned for those who are in the position that I was in back then, and moving east is no longer the solution to affordable housing. I personally am very grateful for people like Mr. Miller, who seeks to do the right thing and provide the kind of housing that Kits desperately needs rather than more luxury condos that few can afford, and he could easily have made that decision. Kits needs more projects like this one to ensure current and future residents have choices of where to live, and I hope you will approve this project tonight, and I very much appreciate your time this evening. Thank you.
Thanks for your time and comments. There are no questions for you, so we'll move on to the next speaker. Thanks so much. Tyler Norman, speaker number thirty-two.
Great, can you hear me?
Sure can. Up to five minutes, please.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everybody. Thank you, Mayor Stewart, members of council, and the various members of our community who've spoken out on this project tonight. My name is Tyler. I'm a UBC graduate. I currently work for the federal government, and I am a renter in Vancouver, living with my partner Alex. Tonight, I'm speaking in enormous favor of this project as a representative of the growing population of young professionals in Vancouver who are being fully forced out of the housing market. You know, I understand that for many of the residents who have spoken out against this project, it's probably hard to imagine the situation that many of the renters are currently facing in Vancouver. But, you know, to put it in perspective, despite the fact that my partner and I both have degrees from, you know, good schools in the lower mainland, and we both have jobs that pay over the average income in the city, we're both forced to spend the vast majority of our income on rent, and we're not alone. That's the situation that most young working professionals in the city are currently facing. You know, the project we're discussing tonight, it's clearly a positive step in the right direction, right? You know, if you look at any rental site, Facebook Marketplace, Craigslist, whatever it is, and you look at the Kitsalino neighborhood, you know, if you're lucky enough to find rental accommodation in that area, you know, you're looking at upwards of twenty-five-hundred bucks a month for a one-bedroom apartment. You know, this is so far beyond a conversation about what's sustainable and what's not sustainable. We're full-on in crisis mode, and it's even worse for students going to UBC. You know, when I was a student, I would travel over an hour each way to get to school every day, and for many students, it was up to two hours a day each way. You know, and, you know, sure, it's an issue for students, but once we graduate, we all sort of figured that this would end and that we'd be able to get a job that would allow us to afford rental options in the city. You know, those folks are gone, and this includes, you know, people that have come from all around the world to study and take advantage of UBC education, and they've left for Calgary, they've left for Kelowna, they've left for, you know, to whatever country they came from because they can't afford to live in this city. And, you know, it's interesting, we just heard a presenter a few minutes ago talk about vanishing Vancouver, and I think that's a really fitting way to describe this exodus, you know, and I can tell you exactly who's vanishing it. Small business owners, highly educated workforce, and doctors and healthcare professionals that can't afford to live here anymore. This project is a real step in the right direction. And I encourage members of We Love Kits and other individuals who've spoken out against this project to consider what the current situation looks like for young professionals in the city, how dire it is and how desperate a situation we are facing right now. We need action, we need increased housing supply, we need projects exactly like this one to be built at Fourth and Balaklava. It's a well-designed, attractive building, it offers a real concrete solution to the housing crisis, it offers affordable rental, it offers hope for workers who are living and working in this neighborhood, and it offers hope for students who are going to UBC so that they don't have to spend three hours on the bus each day just to get to class. It's near transit, it's perfect, it's near amenities, it's near parks, community space, childcare. This is a perfect neighborhood for a building like this, and I really implore council to do the right thing here and allow this project to be built. You know, please give hope to renters in Vancouver and take a positive step forward building this building. We really need it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. There are no questions for you, so I'll move on to the next speaker. Thanks for participating this evening. Okay. Next speaker is Cheryl Webster, speaker number thirty-three.
Hello, can you hear me?
Sure can. Up to five minutes, please.
Okay. Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Cheryl Webster and I live in Kitsalino, one and a half blocks from the site. Thank you for listening this evening. I oppose the rezoning of three zero eight four West Fourth and Twenty-Town Balaklava Street for the following reasons. I'm opposed to the building form, specifically the height and setbacks. I am not opposed to increased density, secured rentals, nor middle-income renters. When I took a closer look at this proposal, I discovered it did not seem to meet MERC policy requirements. This project was displacing six units, which are too many units under the policy. The current site has six two-to-three-bedroom units and houses thirteen people. Each unit rents for approximately sixteen hundred for eleven hundred square feet. This is below the stated MERC rates. The new MERC units will be more costly per square foot than what exists. The current site has a minimum of twelve bedrooms, while the proposed project only provides for eleven total moderate-income bedrooms, so there is a loss at a minimum of one moderate-income bedroom. As well, the newly proposed MERC units will be approximately two thousand square feet less of usable livable space than what currently exists. So upon closer look, it is clear that the MERC aspect of this project is a net negative in the number of bedrooms, square footage, and affordability. So my question is, if there's actually a net negative benefit to moderate-income renters on this site, why is there consideration of so many allowances? The design allowances and financial waivers such as increased height, small setbacks, lack of character and heritage in an RT seven-and-eight neighborhood, and waived DCL should not be applied to this project. Both the increased height and lack of setbacks are not neighborly, a contradiction with MERC policy to transition to homes and neighborhoods as it will cast afternoon shadows and drastically impact the many back gardens at the adjacent Santa Barbara building. Plus, the increased height will be visible for most houses in the area, reducing privacy. If approved, this will be the only six-story building on the Fourth Avenue corridor between Alma and McDonald, and even further. Even newly proposed buildings on the corridor respect existing zoning and will be four-storied, and this even includes proposals at the main intersection of Fourth and McDonald, where one would expect a six-story building. This is in contradiction to section three point three of the MERC requirements for neighborhood contacts. There is no other building within two hundred meters at this height. This project does not have a setback buffer consistent with other developments in the neighborhood, especially the adjacent buildings. Buildings along fourth are eclectic, but they are consistent in both height and setbacks, maintaining the look and feel of the corridor and the neighborhood. Plus, there is significant concern about the setbacks in scale of the building in regards to mature cedar trees. These large evergreen trees provide significant habitat and are much needed for our climate emergency. Everything should be done to save these large trees by going beyond the minimum requirements. On the site plan page on the City of Vancouver's website, the tree canopies are underrepresented, and the tree heights were also underrepresented in the presentation at the beginning of this hearing. We have evidence that these trees are approximately seventy-five feet tall, not forty-nine feet tall, and have been misrepresented to the public by the applicant. In this RT seven-and-eight neighborhood, many building owners and developers have gone through costly and time-consuming renovations being upheld to the stringent character standards set by the City of Vancouver, and this building is a slap in the face. Kitsalino is known for its diversity and range of rentals in both unit composition and price. There are lots of upper and main floor units and houses. This density within the existing vernacular is what makes Kits interesting and diverse. Kits is not like the surrounding neighborhoods where suites are mostly basements and where there is a lack of diversity in rentals. I also found it interesting that in the referral report, it compared the proposed rents for this project to average rents for the entire west side and salaries just to Kitsalino neighborhood. This is an exaggeration of what is reality in Kitsalino, and it is not a fair comparison. This fact alone is case in point for the need for neighborhood-based planning to know what is needed in each neighborhood. The net negative in affordable rentals at a site will have little impact on the housing crisis and a huge impact on the urban design of a heritage-class neighborhood, which already houses a lot of low, moderate-income people. Plus, this will be the third MERC building in our neighborhood and the second in the same school catchment, which is a school that is full, so there's definitely no lack of children in the area. Is the cost of the city worth it when the real gain to this site is from the rezoning of the additional top-two floors, the addition of top-two floors of luxury market rentals with unobstructed views? Is this trade-off really worth it? I believe we can pivot the plan together. There has been willingness to work together to come up with a mutually beneficial solution by Scott Hine, one of the city's past-owned urban designers. They're calling it the Balaklava Plan that provides for MERC-secured rentals and more neighborly design that the community can get behind. There's potential for a win-win through innovation of policy and creativity. I hope the city of Vancouver will not block and will in fact join and facilitate this collaborative process. Thank you. Good night.
Thanks so much. I don't see any questions for you. I appreciate you calling in this evening. I'm gonna move on to the next speaker, who is Peter Collin-Brender.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Sure can. Up to five minutes, please.
Thank you. My name is Peter Collin-Brender and I'm a resident of Vancouver. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to this proposal. I strongly urge the council to approve the application because it aligns well with the city's key priorities and citizen needs, and it chimes with the times. Those priorities and needs include increased rental housing stock, family accommodation, and several of the earlier speakers have talked of how this would positively impact their prospects, the prospects of their families, and those who work for them. It would also provide access to transit to places like UBC, to VGH, to East Van, and downtown. And I think an important other consideration is the lower building emissions. In addition, there are the access to cycle paths. All of those things are good, but in particular, I applaud the actual provision of moderate-income housing stock units. In line with the city's moderate-income housing policy, the site has been deemed appropriate for a six-story building. As a result, the provision of attractive, affordable, modern, much-needed, and conveniently needed-located accommodation for the likes of nurses, first responders, and teachers becomes feasible. As the current pandemic has underscored, these are the very people, the adults, the seniors, and the children of a community heavily depend on for their safety, their health, and their well-being. Without this proposal, and the height required to achieve it, such professionals will likely be shut out from the community. They deserve better now, not another eight years down the line. Thank you.
Thank you for your time this evening. We have no questions for you, but appreciate you participating very much. Thank you very much. And we'll move on to the next speaker, who is Stuart Rush, speaker number thirty-five.
Thank you, mayor. My name is Stuart Rush. I've lived in Kits for twenty-six years. I oppose this rezoning. My partner and I walk by the corner of Fourth and Balaklava several times a week for exercise. Last week, we stopped to take a closer look at the corner houses, the neighborhood houses, and the development site, and I've looked fairly carefully at the proposal referral. The proposal for this site could not be more out of place. Putting a box with this height and mass that towers over adjacent houses and streetscapes doesn't make sense. The building is oversized for a small lot. There's no proportionality. Well, you'll say, well, what is proportionality? And I think you know when something doesn't fit. Would ten stories fit? Would eight stories fit? Your answer's gonna be no, I hope. Six stories doesn't fit either. The fact is that here you have a situation where there's a contest between secured rental or strata, and things are polarized around those two opposites. But there's other creative solutions, and some of them were, I think, quite eloquently pointed out by Jan Pierce. There's an honest effort to reshape and to redesign a different alternative. So what is the city trying to achieve in approving this design over the objections of the neighbors and over the efforts of the community to find an alternative proposal that could be acceptable to the developer and neighbors? You have a group of neighbors and a developer who, notwithstanding You have a group of neighbors and a developer who, notwithstanding estimates of rental demand in an abstract future, and a lot of unsupportive assumptions I've heard tonight, have collaborated to evaluate and consult about another plan that is more in harmony with the housing structures in the community. The townhouse over apartment form is viable and attractive. The developer has expressed an interest in the concept, and this should be encouraged, not discouraged. Why not enable it? Give it a chance to become. This is public consultation speaking. Consultation is more than a ritual. It is more than an economic benefit. It's not a letting, it's not about letting the neighbors blow off steam. It's, it is about a substantive process where genuine alternatives should be heard and investigated. It is more than a statistical equation of yeas and nays. It means listening to others' points of view and changing when ideas are better than what you have on paper. You have an opportunity to embrace a community initiative here, and you can do it. My final word is the one on policy, which I think has been spoken very, uh, well to, uh, by previous speakers. The proposed building does not conform to MRRP policy because there are presently more than three rental units already on the site. It would be a travesty to allow the policy to be so construed to say there are not. How can it ever be a good thing that civic government makes policies and then finds a way to circumvent them? The councillor once told me, leave the policies to us and you bring us the facts. Well, you made the policy and it's being distorted, but the facts don't fit neatly into it. Listen to the facts, and this is the reason to reject the application. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, I don't see any questions on the queue for you, so we're gonna move on to the next speaker. Thank you. We have, uh, Karine Liu.
Hello?
Hi there. Uh, you have up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
All right, thank you. Um, hello, my name is Karen Liu, um, and I am a resident of the Kitsellano neighborhood, and I am speaking in favor of this development proposal. So I recently put up a listing of a ground-level suite in our house that's about four hundred meters away from the proposed development site. Um, for reference, our home has a one hundred point cycling score, a ninety-two point walk score, and a seventy-two point transit score. This makes this the perfect place for, for people to live and engage with their community. I had over twelve hundred listing views, um, a hundred and twenty-four responses, and I conducted more than twenty viewings in the span of only a couple of days. From this experience, I realized how in-demand this neighborhood is. For council and the mayor, I ask you to consider this development that it's a part of the moderate income rental housing pilot program, and I wish for you guys to consider this through the lens of possible future residents. In talking to and meeting the numerous applicants for the suite, I learned about the reasons why they want to move to Kitsellano, and I would like to share some of these sentiments to you all. Many people were looking to move out of their homes with roommates or family. Um, for some, living in Kitsellano would enable them to be closer to their work or school. They wanted to be in a neighborhood that was close to nature and amenities, and moving was the logical next step in their lives. And Kitsellano is a desirable neighborhood. A vast majority of the people I met were very kind, had stable jobs, and were just looking for a new home. I could only offer our one suite, but I want to help so much more than that. In regard to the environment, to prevent the impacts of climate change and increased traffic congestion, we need more buildings and infrastructure that supports the abandonment of the car in the city. This proposal, with its low amount of parking and focus on bike storage, reflects on our universal need to adapt to active and public transportation in cities. Moreover, a new building in the slot would be much more energy-efficient per capita in comparison to what is currently on the site today. This is because new buildings must be compliant to stricter codes on energy consumption. This proposal would allow for thirty-five more families and individuals to live near a transit corridor, grocery stores, and the beautiful nature that makes Vancouver such a wonderful place to live. I really hope that council considers this proposal and how it can help provide homes and make our community better. Thank you.
Thanks for your time and comments this evening. I don't see questions for you, so I'm gonna move on to the next speaker. Thanks so much. Uh, we have Christina DiMarco, speaker number thirty-seven.
Good evening. My name is Christina DiMarco, and I'm a Vancouver resident and a former City of Vancouver and regional planner. I am speaking in support of a very promising community-generated option which will deliver secured rental housing with much lower construction costs, is more environmentally friendly, and more neighborhood-friendly. I received many emails asking for my analysis of this project. One friend was surprised to hear I was against the rezoning and wrote, "When I worked at Eaton's, I worked for Mr. Miller, and he is not a big bad developer. I support six-story high buildings. The city needs a tax revenue and rental stock going forward." I wrote back to her and said, "I agree with her character reference of Mr. Miller," and added that "we are working with his progressive development consultant, James Evans." I told her the community is also fortunate to have the volunteer help of a former City of Vancouver urban designer, Scott Hine, and that so far, we have come up with a promising cost-effective design. She wrote, she wrote back and said, "Good, I support exploring our alternatives. Please keep me posted." I agree on first glance, the current project seems adequate. Here are the boxes it ticks: on an arterial, good bus service, near shops and services, pleasant enough architecture, six stories definitely works in some locations. For many folks speaking in favor this evening, it ticks these boxes, and we do need rental housing, so what is there not to support? The poor building efficiency caused by this small shallow lot shows why this is an unsustainable solution. Very expensive building costs, high inefficiency, no room for green infrastructure. Simply put, as one of my professors used to say, nothing gained by overbuilding. The conditions for exploring an alternative are highly suitable for five key reasons, and these reasons also explain why I volunteered to help. Number one, the Kitsellano community leaders are open to innovation and support the need for secured rental housing. They support more density than is currently allowed and not worried about space for parked cars. Number two, the Millers want to do a rental project. Their intention is to create a project that they, the community, and their future tenants could all regard as a neighborhood asset. Number three, the proposal is not working as a MRRP, uh, RM four pilot. The pilot has failed in this location, which is fine, that is what pilots are for, a trial of what works and what doesn't work. However, I could see the small site, the equivalent of two thirty-three-foot lots in site area, would be a good pilot test for the innovation, innovative housing choices described in councillor Dominado's missing middle motion. Number four, I'm interested to see what collaboration and trust can be cultivated in the neighborhood to build capacity for meaningful community dialogue on Vancouver Plan and for the upcoming draft secured rental policy in RS and RT zones. And fifth, uh, finally, I can see a solid policy rationale for council to consider this alternative. It fits within the MRRP policy door with one guideline adjustment and fits much better than the proposal on the table. James and Scott have come up with a building form with no elevators, no internal corridors or stairways, so construction costs are much lower. James has said that an FSR around two will be financially viable. This is an increase of about forty percent over the current one point four five. The usable floor space is a hundred percent efficient and only thirteen percent less living area than the current proposal. With the need to relocate the existing tenants on the site in, in two and three-bedroom units in new development, that means five or six of the units could be MRRP below-market units. This is not an academic exercise. Scott Hine had also volunteered to help find a solution for the development adjacent, adjacent to the hospice at four five seven five Granville. Scott and the architect Stuart Howard came up with a design that meets the developer's needs and is supported by the hospice. Also, a rental project with a similar formula as the Balla Clava option. In closing, we all want to boost cost-effective rental housing supply. We do not want to engage in housing wars jeopardizing future rental housing and missing middle projects. The benefits of considering the alternative far outweigh the costs. We commit to working very quickly with the Millers, James Evans, and city staff to bring a financially viable innovative option to council. To be respectful of timelines, I recommend council impose a strict deadline to consider the alternative and also expedite the DP BP process. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Thank you, councillor Hardwick. Questions up to five minutes?
Thank you, Christina. May I call you Christina?
Yes.
Thank you, we have to be careful. Um, how many years did you work at the City of Vancouver Planning Department?
Uh, I worked for seven years at the City of Vancouver. I was hired to work on city plan, and then after my, um, time at City Vancouver, I went and worked at Metro Vancouver, uh, for thirteen years.
So you're a professional planner?
Yes.
So, um, page seven of the council report says, "This proposal is consistent with the intent of the MRRP program." Can you comment on whether you agree with this statement?
Uh, okay, there's been a lot of confusion about, uh, the MRRP guidelines. So, what, once council approves these guidelines, um, they become a statement on, um, what are the rules council's going to follow when they consider, uh, bonus density and, um, CAC waivers and DCL waivers? So this is the, the set of rules, and it says very specifically what should happen in RM zones. And I, I looked very carefully at the, the origins of this, uh, the, the conditions in the RM zone by going back to the original, uh, meeting in twenty seventeen when the housing strategy was approved. And it was very clear to me that, um, because of a, a motion on the, the floor of council, in fact, there were many motions that evening, and, um, councillor De Genova and councillor Carr will remember it, um, very well, uh, that it was clear that what council was getting at from listening to the delegations and that they did want to protect the RM areas and that they did mean to say that it was sites with a maximum of three existing rental units. And then when you follow the paper trail later on, you can, you can see the rental stock housing ODP also gets changed from six down to, uh, three rental units on a site. And so it was just a, basically a drafting area, error to put that word buildings in there. So it's, it's clear that, that the, um, development does not comply with that definition of underutilized, and it's also clear that it doesn't comply with the projects must consider and respect transitions to surrounding areas and homes, and it does not comply with the neighborhood context criteria.
So in your professional experience, sorry to interrupt, but I have limited time.
Oh, sorry.
In your experience, um, as a professional planner, when, uh, something, uh, an application does not meet with the guidelines, um, would it advance as this project has advanced?
What, what staff would do, would say, okay, okay, council, we understand the guidelines. Um, we felt that this proposal had, did have some merit, so we take it to you and decide whether you want to, um, actually waive the, waive these conditions, uh, to support this application. So council certainly has the right to waive conditions, and so what I'm saying is, you've got two, um, options before you. One is more compatible with the options than the other, the one, the spell a clava option.
I'm sorry to interrupt again, but, but we don't. We, we can either approve, as the mayor said at the top of the meeting, we can approve, we can reject, or we can send it back. So the decision that will be made to here, the Balla Clava, uh, proposal, um, as you're calling it, doesn't exist right now. So I just wanted to clarify that, and, and so it's either approve, reject, or, or send it back for modification. So, but what you're saying is that coun, council has the attitude, has the latitude to depart?
Certainly, yes, and, and can instruct staff to, uh, work with the applicant and the community to come back with, um, the Balla Clava option.
Okay, well, um, I don't know whether council will have that, an appetite for that or not, but, uh, I do, uh, greatly appreciate your input as, uh, someone that has looked at this so closely and, and has, uh, your professional expertise. Uh, any parting words?
Um, I, I think it's a wonderful opportunity to work with the community and send messages out that they are, that you are interested in, uh, what the neighbors, neighbors have to say. And, and also, it's, it's a great opportunity that Mr. Miller and James Evans seems to be, uh, open to, um, exploring the alternative.
Thanks so much. We have, that's the five minutes, and, uh, you have questions from councillor Weep? Councillor Weep? You're on mute perhaps? Still on mute, maybe? Nope, okay.
Hello?
Hi, no. Uh, so I think that's it, uh, for, uh, uh, questions for you, speaker. Thank you so much for, uh, calling in tonight. I'm gonna move on to the next, the next speaker. Uh, we've got, uh, Andrew Brown, speaker number thirty-eight.
Uh, good evening.
Hello? Uh, up to five minutes.
Yes. Okay, thank you. My name is Andrew Brown, and I'm speaking in opposition to this rezoning. Uh, I'm a resident of Kitsellano. Um, as, as you know, one of the criteria for MRRP rezoning is neighborliness. Uh, as I watch these spot rezonings happening in our neighborhood, I'm concerned that the planning department, and I can only assume it's because of their enthusiasm to implement these policies, rather than presenting a balanced view, seem to act as advocates for developers, even to the point of sidestepping, layering deficiencies in the proposals. Um, as many people have pointed out, in this case, you have six rental units on the site which exceeds the three permitted by the MRRP policy, and the frankly absurd justification that it's okay because they happen to be split over three buildings. During the present, during their presentation, the developers presented a map of purpose-built rental buildings in the vicinity of the project. As a counterpoint to this, I wanted to share with you a map from the City Hall Watch blog that shows purpose-built rental locations throughout the city, and I believe that's up on your, your screen now. It's worth noting that fully forty-one percent of the twenty-three thousand homes in Kitsellano are purpose-built rentals. This is second only-
Point of privilege, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sorry, speaker. Uh, councillor Hardwick?
I ca, I cannot see the, uh, the image that the speaker was addressing, the map. Thank you.
Okay, I wasn't aware of that. Right, so I do see it now on the public screen? You okay? Okay, I'll ask the speaker to continue.
Sorry.
Okay. Thank you, thank you. No, it's important that you see it. Um, so it's worth noting that fully forty-one percent of the twenty-three thousand homes in Kitsellano are purpose-built rentals. This is second only to the West End in terms of both the percentage and absolute number of purpose-built rentals. We need all forms of housing, both owned and rental, and consigning young people to spend their lives renting while enriching wealthy landowners is a mistake. Options should be provided for families to invest in and grow their equity in Vancouver. This property should be developed according to the existing zoning in, in the RM four form. If the landowners have their hearts set on building a rental building, nothing prevents them from building in the RM four form and retaining and renting the units. I don't know what they paid for this property.
Point of privilege again, I'm sorry, I'm hearing a lot of interfering noise.
Please continue, speaker.
Yes, sorry, I, I'm hearing noise too. I, I don't think it's coming from, from my end. Um, i, if the landowners have their hearts set on building a rental building, nothing prevents them from building in the RM four form and retaining and renting those units. I don't know what they paid for this property, but in the nineteen seventies, it must be such a small amount that economic viability shouldn't be an issue. Rezoning should not be done lightly. The people who have purchased and lovingly restored the heritage bungalows in this block should be entitled to at least as much consideration as the owner of two small lots. And I don't think council and staff should spend- And I don't think council and staff should spend so much time on such a small project. In this particular case, there are alternative designs being discussed for this site that do not block sunlight and invade the neighbors' privacy, that fit the neighborhood, and that actually meet the neighborliness criterion. Since you're being asked to do a spot rezoning anyway, why not rezone for the Balaclava option? In addition to soothing this immediate neighborhood better, it is a more acceptable form for heritage residential areas everywhere. If used as a model for development in such neighborhoods, perhaps so much outrage and the two or three nights of public hearings could be avoided. It would be premature to grant a rezoning for the building form as proposed. Please do more than rubber stamp the planning department's proposal. We need you to move past the policies of the previous council and to act in the interest of all residents of Vancouver, including the neighbors of this proposed building. Thank you.
Thanks so much. That's, I don't see any questions for you, sir, so we're going to move to the next speaker. Thanks for participating this evening. Next speaker, number thirty-nine, is Carol Anne Jong. We have Carol Anne Jong on the line.
Hello?
Hi there.
Hello?
Hi there.
Hi, can you hear me?
Sure can. You have up to five minutes. Please go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Carol Jong, and I have lived in Vancouver for over twenty years. I am opposed to this rezoning application for several reasons. My biggest concern is the lack of consideration for the neighbors to the south. I do not agree with the three-foot setback relaxation on the south side. The lots along Fifth Avenue are already shallow lots at thirty-two feet by one hundred and ten feet, whereas a standard residential lot is thirty-three feet by one hundred and twenty-two feet. The relaxation and setbacks that the applicant is asking for will bring the proposed building unacceptably close to neighbors on the south side, causing problems of looming mass and overlooking. Balcony placements on the south side are also major and unacceptable privacy problems. I note that the Urban Design Panel's assessment on May thirteenth, twenty twenty has many unresolved issues with the way the south side of the building is treated. Here are some quotes from the panel. First, "The building is not well transitioned to the south and the lanes along the single-family zone that have a lot of green and amenity on neighboring sites along the lane." Second, "The lane setback relaxation is not supportable." Third, "The project is challenging to the single-family zone to the south. It needs to go further to reduce the height and bulk." And the panel only supported this project with the following recommendation: "Design development to present a greener, more garden-y edge to the project, especially to the neighbors to the east and the south." There are so many problems related to the south transition. I'm very disappointed that the applicant hasn't made any material change to the original application and is trying to push it through council. Mayor and council, this building is an inconsiderate design. I respectfully ask that you do not approve it, but rather explore other options, like the Balaclava option. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. That's it for, I don't see any questions from council for you, so we'll move on to the next speaker. We have speaker number forty, Wen Hui Jong.
Hello, can you hear me?
Sure can. Up to five minutes, please.
Hello, Mayor and council. My name is Wen Hui Jong. I have lived in Vancouver for over twenty years. I oppose this rezoning application. I think the proposed rezoning application is too aggressive. It is aggressive in the size, the height, the scale, and the footprint, which together will result in an ugly, bulky structure dominating the neighborhood. It's like the Chinese saying, a crane standing among chickens. It's a clear lack of harmony with the buildings in the area. When you compare this aggressiveness with the alternative design, the Balaclava option, as proposed by the West Kitzellano Residents Association and We Love Kids, you can see the deficiencies, such as the inefficient use of space, the narrow setback, and neighborhood incompatibility. For example, the balconies at the back or south side are only six feet from the rear property line. It's too close to the adjacent houses to the south. This bulky design with little setback is also a problem to the front or north side of the proposed plan. Residents will be closer to the Fourth Avenue traffic noise and will have less greenery, as they will lose at least three existing mature cedar trees. The crux of the matter is about balance, about achieving the city's goal while taking into consideration the concerns of the residents in the neighborhood. It's about attaining that goal in a more efficient and equitable way. I respectfully urge the city to reject this rezoning application. By doing so, you keep the door of collaboration open. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for your time. I don't see any other speakers. Council, we're at nine fifty-six by my clock, so not enough time for another speaker. We'll need a motion to reconvene, to recess and reconvene, I believe it's tomorrow at six P.M. That's February twenty-fourth at six P.M. And so do we have a motion for that?
Motion to recess and reconvene?
Thank you very much. Seconder?
Second.
Thanks. And just before I go to the vote, I just a reminder to council not to engage in any way with the public while, whilst, as we're still listening. Great, so all in favor of recessing? Yay?
Yay.
Oppose, nay? Great, thanks so much. Thanks to the clerks for all your work tonight, and public, and of course, staff. Thank you, council, and we'll see you tomorrow. Okay, thanks. Bye-bye.
Night. Night, everyone. Thank you. Thanks, staff.
See y'all tomorrow.